After a rainy or icy event to put those posts back up. Sometimes they come up missing, so we have to replace them. And in this particular case, this was done as part of the Wilson Cresser project that took place earlier this year, as well as the new signage that they put along Pioneer and FM 407. Here we have them doing the asphalt repair. There was a significant chunk that needed to be repaired along Hilltop Trail due to base failure. In this particular case, it looks like there was a sixty inch by thirty-six inch area, I'm sorry, sixty foot by thirty-six inch area with asphalt. They also fill in potholes in other locations. You have gravel that is constantly having to be replaced along Lanes Way and Latham because those are still gravel roads. We're working on getting both of those replaced into the paved roads, but for now it's a constant ongoing maintenance issue that our public works guys are having to go out there and replace road base, particularly after a rain event. And then we get work with the county to assist us in repairing Pioneer Road. And sometimes they also help us with Ram Road, depending on the amount of damage that we find along Ram Road. Here, they were replacing with the hot mix material. The portion of 4717 that we had found that was damaged, but they also replaced the entryway to the Rio Rapture subdivision not that long ago using the hot mix. So as you can see, there was kind of an all hands on deck kind of day for those two projects. And then, of course, they also hit the Denny County side of our city. We're constantly having to repair potholes on Bee Judge Lane as well as South County Line Road north of 407. Fortunately, South County Line Road south is a concrete road now, but north of 407, we're still dealing with asphalt and particularly Bee Judge Lane that under any given rain event, just the way that road drainage is set up, the water will flow onto that road constantly. So it's an awful battle that they had out there. Here, it looks like they were filling in several potholes. It looks like sixteen tons of road base on Latham Lane, as well as potholes again on Bee Judge Lane. And that looks like that was right at the intersection of South County Line Road and Bee Judge Lane, where they were making those repairs on that particular week. And then, on this particular case, it looked like they were doing some road base gravel improvements along Ram Road, so because that's our tractor that's out there. So then we did it up, in this case, I guess six truckloads of road base. So we did not need to have the county go out there. We took care of that one ourselves. And in this particular case, they were also repairing some damage to Grayland Lane and again, County Line Road 4717. Here you see them working again in the Chisholm Hills, Denverhood. In this particular case, it looked like it was a sixty foot by three foot repair job that they did out in that particular area. I believe this is on Hilltop Trail. We do have a software that we use called iWorks for our public works. So we manage our materials, we manage our vehicles and equipment, we manage our work as well. And we're able to track that on iWorks. So this is an example of a report that we got from iWorks. So if you look down here towards the bottom, you have this pothole repair job that occurred on February the fifth. They repaired a large pothole entrance to Rio Rapture subdivision. And it says basically what they did and the date that they completed it. So they started on the fifth, they finished on the twentieth. And it took them twenty man hours to get that done. So this is the way that our manager of public works is able to better gauge how much manpower, how much material, how much equipment, time is going to be needed for certain jobs. This is all data that we didn't have before that we have now. So we're better able to manage or anticipate what our budgetary or manpower needs are going to be for certain types of projects. They're also responsible for our facilities. They do everything from winterizing all of our plumbing, including the wellhouse in this particular case, winterizing the pipes for the tanks used by the fire department on the other side of the municipal complex, of the multipurpose building. They're responsible for taking inventory of their, of all of their different materials and items. And again, all of this was done here recently to start uploading all this information onto the iWork software. So now we know how many concrete, how many given day, how many concrete bags do we have, how many stop signs do we have, how many, you know, cans of tack oil do we have? So we know when we're running low, we can go ahead and order it. So it does not affect our ability to get a job done. They also here recently were digging a ditch in our municipal complex from the front of our entryway down to the back of our building. We dropped down some conduit lines for electrical. We want to be able to put on lights through our municipal complex sign off of every 407. We want to eventually be able to add some lights to light up the driveway coming down our complex because it's very dark at night. And then also have some outlets out to be able to use when we have events out at these locations that folks can connect to. At the same time, we're also dropping conduits down for the company that's going to be providing fiber to our building so that we will not have a high-speed internet connection as opposed to what we have now. They also are responsible for our park. In this particular case, they installed the grill that you see out at our pavilion. So we purchased the grill and they're the ones that went out and made sure that it was installed properly. This was needed to be able to complete our project with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. They go out there constantly having to pressure wash the sidewalks to, especially after a rain event, to get it off of there and make sure it's safe for kids and anybody that's out walking our sidewalks. They're constantly emptying out the trash cans and weed eating and mowing out at our park. They're also the ones that worked behind saying, oh, here, we ended up getting some contact boxes and they were the ones that installed all the electrical work and installed the doors. So now we're able to better secure a lot of our equipment that we were not able to secure in the past. And we've been able to compartmentalize it now. So it's easier to find, it's easier to back your vehicle, the trailer up to and load up and go. And as you can see, more shots of them doing work out at our park. Preventive maintenance is one of the things that we harp on a lot. And so particularly on a rainy day, you will see them out here in the municipal complex working on everything from replacing the grease on the barriers for our trailers to flushing lines to replacing fluids. So they're constantly out here. They're also, in this particular week, it looked like they were repairing a water leak that was found along one of our drainage pipes at our municipal complex. They also responsible for helping us out with special events. For the Keep Me Fair and Beautiful event cleanup that we had last year, they were the ones that went out and ordered all the things that we needed, from the vest to the bags and gloves. They were out there during the event itself with the trucks because that's where we loaded the bags up, brought them back to City Hall and afterwards, they're the ones that take them out to the dump to get disposed. So they play a pivotal role in our, and continue to play a pivotal role in any Keep Me Fair and Beautiful cleanup type of projects. They also help out with our special events. In this particular case, with their turn and retreat, they're responsible for taking everything out to the parks that we have, something tables and chairs, the tents, the generators, two games that we have set up. So they're the ones that are responsible for getting all that out there. And then, of course, after everything's done, load it back up, bring it back, clean it and put it away. They helped us out tremendously by assembling all of the bicycles that we ended up using sponsorship money that we weren't able to give out to the kiddos. So they assembled the bikes in there in the multipurpose building. They're also the ones that put together the little train ride that we ended up using for the first time at the Breakfast with Saturday event, where we've used it ever since then at other special events. So we're really able to use these little trailers. All we do is we swap out the cover to them and public works is the one that's responsible for that. Again, when we have the, we had the holiday dinner here in this room. They take all this, this day of stuff out, they take out all the chairs and put it up and set up all the tables and set everything up for us to be able to put the meal, to have meals in here and then come back out and clean everything back out. For the Easter egg hunt, they actually were the ones that cut out some of the decorations that we had. In this particular case, you're seeing one of the Easter eggs that they ended up cutting out for staff to be able to paint and we were able to put that out. That's the way that we're able to keep costs down, but still be able to add some additional amenities to our special events is that we've got that kind of talent here in our public work team. And they play a role each time we have a quarterly cleanup. They're the ones that are out there preparing the field, mowing it. They got to lay out all of their cones and flags to make sure that the tractor knows how to come into the area so that they're not just going in which direction. They make sure that the frontier ways puts the dumpsters where they need to go. And then, of course, the day of, they're out there with the, with the tractor compacting down the debris so that we can get maximize the amount of stuff that we're able to put into the dumpsters. They also are the ones that go out to our various subdivisions and put the signs up like you see there on the right-hand side for the cleanup, announcing the cleanup to let our residents, don't remind our residents, that we've got a cleanup coming up, both on the Denny County side and the Wise County side. We put those signs out there to make it easier for residents to remember we've got a cleanup coming up at any particular Saturday. Again, this is using the iWork system as to how we go around and keeps track of the various needs as far as this particular case, maintenance. So whenever we need something fixed from, we need to fix the slot, we need to replace plumbing or we have tall grass and weeds, we need to address, all of that goes to them via the iWork system that we have access to. I think that's it. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
What I would like to see, we purchase, told the citizen, we're purchasing a truck so that we can improve our code enforcement. And we purchase pothole machines so that we can increase our production in potholes. If we could keep some track of those two items, I know that they are involved in the events and pipe breakage and fixing the tires. I'm very well aware of that. But my concern was that we, with the premises, that more potholes would be fixed and that more code enforcement would be done. If I could get this type of form maybe on a monthly basis so that I can see that we're utilizing those purchases to the best of our abilities since that's what we were told they were for, just keep a track of that.
So you want an actual report more than what I sent you out on Friday memo to tell you all the different potholes that they're repairing that week?
Well, in this year, if you go through this year, what you've sent out, there may be four potholes and two high grass and two unsightly, one drunk, junk truck. That type of information is what I'm interested in, in some type of format like this. A lot of the pictures that you've sent out, I've seen all of those. And those have been taking place for several months. If we can just keep track of something like that, that would be appreciated.
Okay, sure. I can put out probably a, I'll ask him to give me a monthly report at the end of each month, just like I give you guys one for municipal four, or I get one from the fire department or I need to fire and rescue it. So not a problem. We can certainly send that out.
Yeah, that would be good.
Any other questions besides?
Mary, it's, would it be possible to have Adam's sixth work session at the end of the regular session for the second session because everyone's here, but the end of the main, the record session?
How long is the, my strategic plan is going to be a bit thirty minutes, okay? So yeah, let's move back to, we'll move back to, come back to that?
Yeah.
At the end of the, at the end of the, this, this, this executive session. Not a problem. I guess you want to follow a regular session, so that's order your proposal. Absolutely. Well, we'll close it. We'll just, yeah, we'll just come back to, okay. So we'll move into the regular session. We'll call, order, determine the form. Barbie Burger, Pete Hasawski, Sarah Adams.
Stephen.
I want to share.
Oh, no, and we went on. We are waiting to talk in a place of class. Analysis and special organizations. No, sir. City, which, uh, I don't have anything to talk to the council today. For what would the public comment? Another public comment, city council will ask persons who have comments on office relations related to city issues, projects or policies for brief address, to briefly address the city council. Anyone wishing to speak should sign in with the city secretary before the beginning of the city council meeting in order to expedite the flow of the business and provide all citizens with the opportunity to speak. There is a three-minute limit on any person addressing the city council. State law prohibits the council from discussing or talking, taking action on any item not listed on the proposed agenda. So with that, we'll go to Morgan.
Tag my answer.
I'm sorry.
Tag my answer.
That's right. If you'll come forward, state your name, address and.
I'm Morgan Semler. I live at 113 Mississauga Lane in Fairview Meadows. I would like to address the amendment that is being proposed for Fairview Meadows North. There's talk about shrinking the lot sizes, which is a concern for all of us in the neighborhood. There are issues in our neighborhood that are not being addressed, such as water issues, our drainage issue system, whether the lots are not built properly. Right now, he is not being held responsible for the current agreement that the city has with him. And I believe that should be addressed first before any amendment is made to Fairview Meadows North. Another issue that was, I saw an amendment for Fairview Meadows North is there is a thirty-seven acre park being planned. We have a park that was supposed to be planned in phase two. It was fourteen and a half acres. It has yet to be built. I don't think that should be something that should be planned on until our neighborhood is fixed first, until the new neighborhood is planned. So I believe those issues need to be addressed in our neighborhood before we start looking at the next neighborhood and going on. That's all.
But keep there. Next, I have Ricky Jones.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is Ricky Jones, 15142, South County Line Road, former rancher in Fairview. I'm a new resident here. I've been here for about one month. I had the opportunity to come from Justin and I chose to do Fairview for many reasons, but one of them being the taxes and that size loss you have here. Professionally, I'm the vice president of operations for a private EMS organization and I've been with them for fourteen years. Appropriately, this is EMS week, so I'd like to thank any first responders, especially this week and every day. I want to bring you my concerns regarding fire EMS response on the Denny County side, where I live at Flomarach. There's been discussion online about possibly reallocating funds from the Justin Community Fire Department and maybe pushing them towards the new Fairview Fire Department that they can be better used. I would encourage you all to look into the contract and how much it actually costs. Be transparent and share that information online when you're talking about it because you're getting an incredible value for EMS. There's a lot of things going on in EMS and private EMS due to the lack of funding. You can look at MetStar in Fort Worth, the city's taking over. It's a ton of them. And so you're getting an incredible deal. But my concern is if you are talking about potentially reallocating funds, please provide your solution. Because I don't believe the Wise County EMS is going to be able to recover Denny County. And if you're saying that they're just going to cover us anyway based on mutual aid agreements, they don't have to continue to resign a mutual aid agreement without compensation. So please just do your homework, look into that. Additionally, I wanted to discuss police services. So when I chose the city I wanted to move to, I had the opportunity to come and meet with your city administrator who was nice enough to sit down with me as a future resident and discuss things going on in the city and things would be happening around where I wanted to move. But he talked about the PD solution with Boyd PD and the interlocal agreements. And I thought that that idea was really, really brilliant to use interlocal agreements as a way to cost share and share resources so that you can have net neutral or services that are not as expensive on the resident. So I wanted to share those things. I wanted to thank the city administrator for allowing me to come and talk to him and learn more about the city. And I just hope that you all will consider the people that obviously have been here for a long time, but the new residents too on the Denny County side and looking out for us because that side of the city is going to be very, very hard as these big developments come to fruition. And so you're going to have to have a plan to have those covered. Thank you.
You done agree?
We're agreeing. Want to shake for knowledge, right? First of all, I want to address the behavior of two council members, Harvey Berger and Sarah Adams, regarding the council meeting on five six. The behavior of these members walking out of the council meeting violates the council's decorum policy, section 1160, which states that members shall preserve order and decorum, shall not interrupt or delay proceedings and shall obey the rules of the council. These members could have simply made a motion to table a particular vote but wanted to perpetuate lines about shady dealings at City Hall. Their antics not only did a disservice to the community, but it also cost the taxpayers money. These two individuals state how they want to save the taxpayers' money. So I think it is appropriate that these individuals reimburse the taxpayers for the expensive incurred for the five-six meeting or resign from the council. I also ask that you formally reprimand these council members for their behavior. Regarding the Fairview Meadows agenda item, the current amendment does not address transportation impact fees, which would be well over $500,000. Not only that, the additional revenue of well over $1 million from the North Development can offset the cost of paving Pioneer Road. Those council members who claim they are saving taxpayers' money are willing to die on the heel of the lot sizes because it gets them to. The current council doesn't even have a one acre minimum park.
Tomorrow.
This agenda item has on the taxpayers of New Fairview. And then lastly, since he became city administrator, John has done a great job of improving our community. John has given the city of New Fairview a voice in Wise County. John brokered a collaboration with Southwise Cities for future water exploration. He cultivated partnerships with neighboring cities that brought services to our community and provided a substantial revenue source. John has worked to keep expenses down and stay within budget despite losing a large amount of the tax roll with Falcon Ridge deannexation. He created a Parks Board and Keep New Fairview Beautiful Committee. He was instrumental in working with various organizations to secure grants to support these programs. Our city is the first in Wise County to be awarded a green ribbon grant because John knows how to find the money. John and staff have retired with city events, creating substantially more community engagement. So with that said, I just ask the council members set aside their personal problems and do what's best for the city.
Thank you. Richard, approve?
And let's jump on the bottom. Oh, Richard, one or two for now as a trial. Unfortunately, due to politics and last meetings, some legitimate questions didn't get asked about Fairview Meadows. And I think they, you know, really need to be asked and considered. You know, so much has been made about the lots and their size and it's really about the fourth issue and this is something that needs to be addressed. First off, you know, the biggest open room is, you know, debt ceiling and is that's going to be increased. And if it's not, you know, it's at forty million now. If we don't increase and receive, you know, what does that mean to the future of that property? Also, the current amendment is not addressing the park. And also, the current amendment was actually part to our chance of mutation impact fees. So there's a question there, you know, where we would get that additional funds or thing to do Pioneer Road and actually that goes into the pot that actually is for all the roads that are major connectors in our town. So again, it could have a major impact not to your apartment road with a ram road and future, you know, roads that could spin counter. So, you know, and also with lot size, this is kind of in this frame throughout the whole thing. As far as, there's a thirty-seven acre park that's being proposed as part of that along with, within that whole development. So when you break it down to do the math, that's a house that would point nine acres. So we're almost at an acre when you include that over the entire property, especially with the thirty-seven acres in green space. And over the entire property, yes. Oh, and then also just to address, I was really concerned about my boyfriend's agenda. Saw, you know, John in there and, you know, I feel fortunate in my past employment and also just my relationships here in the county. Now, you talk to any city, your county leaders, we all across Wise County, and they take up the praise, John, just for his professionalism and with all the work that he's done. You know, I got to put in snap last year in Austin with all his work at the county in Wise County, send up campus meetings with representatives, pin us in, knocking on doors, everything. It's really, you see that with collaboration with Southwise and the progression with the water agreements that we're trying to get in place for the future of our town. So he deserves a lot of praise for that. And also with his assistance, we've been able to secure that's his block grant, secured the first green ribbon grant in the county. We finished the park. We could have a richer, larger park. Everything is mission. So, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, he's doing a great job. So I hope that what that is on the agenda and why it is recognized for all this hard work. And finally, the strategic plan was part of the first one last year. And I was very hopeful at that time, something this town really needs and I think it would avoid a lot of the discussions, especially about lot sizes, is a very good zoning, comprehensive zoning plan. So I hope that is part of your strategic plan to work for funding that and get that because I think that would be huge for our community because we are sixteen miles. We're the largest, okay. Thank you.
Jay?
By, yes. Respect to city members. I hope this message finds you well.
State your address first.
Yes, I'll get in the introduction. I hope this message finds you well. We are the proud owners of Blueau Gas Station located at 101 Illinois Street in the city of New Fairview. Our gas station has been serving. Our gas station has been serving the community for almost twenty years, trying to uphold the best standards we can to represent, best representing Fairview. As you all know, we are experiencing environmental issues at our gas station. For a little over two months now, in early March, our lines were shut down due to water not passing city requirements. After weeks of investigation, this water continued to stay shut, causing to have no bathroom or any water amenities for customers, making it very difficult to stay with the business. We later discovered the issue being due to an underground gas line leak from pipe leading to our pumps. Since we have diligently working, diligently cooperating with municipal authorities and regulated regulatory agencies such as Texas Commission of Environmental Quality and Environmental Quality, EPA. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to address the imminent environmental concern. Despite our best effort, we have encountered significant challenges in resolving this issue. As one of the two top taxpayers in the city of New Fairview attendants to this matter and our concerns have given minimal attention to. Due to this escalating situation, we are unable to operate as a gas station. We continue to try to resolve this issue quickly as possible. We are running into many issues. The issue is costing us hundreds of thousands to resolve and we need to, and we hire the necessary people need to resolve the task. We are running into more problems with the city of New Fairview. After being given a list of instructions from the city and having resolved the issue and hiring the correct parties to help us complete them, the city has put us on hold again. From having to repair pipes to now completely installing them again. The feedback we received from the city been unclear, inconsistent, and goes against even the professional word. Continuously, continually with the inconsistency, we've also dealt with multiple periods of not hearing back from the city on further instructions for weeks at hand. Our business continues to stay unable to operate at full capacity, costing us more than we can afford at the point. We write this letter pleading for help and guiding us, getting us back on our feet and helping us with this issue resolved as quickly and efficiently as possible. We are committed, still committed to rectify the situation and get back up and running to continue to support the city of New Fairview and represent it to the best of our abilities. I urge you to prioritize this matter and provide us with clear and actionable guide to expedite the resolution process. We stand ready to cooperate fully and implement any necessary measures to address the root cause of the environmental concern. Thank you for having your attention to this argument matter, urgent matter. I look forward for your prompt response and collaboration in resolving this issue swiftly and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. All matters to consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council and will be enacted by one of them. And I don't think it's a move on the consent agenda by the city minister and mayor or any member of the city council, although it may be considered after approval of the consent agenda. Three to items, A, approved the city council meeting minutes for April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, and approved in March and April financial rates. Questions or?
I'm making notes into Ruby. I'm just extending.
I'll sign it.
All of the papers for that?
Aye.
Those votes? The new business received and considered act on moving forward with partial construction of Pioneer at also important further anticipated issues of Texas Department of Public Transportation permits. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask our city engineer, Riley Barulito, from Westwood, to give the staff's presentation on this item.
One second while we get this. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and new council member, Ms. Cheps. Thank you for having me. John was asking to give you all a presentation on Pioneer Road. Pioneer Road, this is a city-owned street that is within the city limits. It's in the southwest corner of the city of New Fairview. It touches FM four oh seven on the north and then on the, it makes kind of a backwards L and it will touch the frontage road of US two eighty seven. It's kind of sandwiched right next to the Fairview Meadows development. We have two miles of road that we're looking at right now. It's a gravel street that, as John mentioned earlier, the city Public Works Department has continuous efforts of improving and keeping it shaped together so that it's drivable for the residents that live up and down the road. I believe at least every two months, if not once a quarter, they are dumping several truckloads. I believe in their end is meant I'll be shared that it's about ten truckloads a time. I know I've spoken with the public works guys about ways to try to improve this more besides just keep dumping rocks into washout holes. But unfortunately, until a road is paved, you just have to keep patching up to your best abilities. We have five culvert crossings, which each of these culvert locations, they wash out, all the culverts are undersized. Drainage is not to pretty much anybody's standards. There's really no clear drainage ways along this road. Each one of those culvert crossings severely undersized, tilted up, and have gone through a lot in their time. A timeline on Pioneer Road, I have been acting as whole city engineer since very late twenty eighteen. One of my very first tasks that I helped out with was an old council member knew that we have this development coming along Pioneer Road, well, Fairview Meadows. So late twenty nineteen, I was instructed to go out there, write a report and come back to council and discuss my findings and look at what that road would need to be able to get to an adequate standard. I presented in November, November fourth, twenty nineteen, about the Pioneer Road reconstruction, talking about what needed, from a preliminary standpoint, what needed to be addressed to help with the drainage ways, what needed to be addressed to get a payable section put down, should right away be needed, what type of utilities are out there, kind of the whole nine yards to get just a base outline of what we're actually looking at on Pioneer Road. Fast forwarding here, city council and at the time, our company was the Checka Coke. We later then acquired. So we went from Checka Coke to Westwood, but same company, same engineer that's been working this whole time. December of twenty twenty, I actually worked with previous city administration and council to get into an agreement to have some engineering and survey funds put together. When we got into that agreement, the city staff at that point in time went to Fairview Meadows and said, y'all are the ones that are bringing density to this area. Will y'all help in finding the engineering? The survey and engineering needed to put a plan set together for this road and they easily agreed to it. And they actually are the ones that have been paying for my services to look at all construction plans along Pioneer Road. A few months after the signed agreement, I was able to have a full survey done and I put a plan set together in which I began coordinating with Tech dot. With Pioneer Road, it does connect to FM four oh seven. And in order to do any type of pavement improvements or drainage improvements, you need to have a signed Tech dot driveway access permit. So I began working on that in February twenty twenty one. In June of twenty one, plans and bid documents were substantially completed. At that point in time, I was under the assumption we may be ready to rock and roll on it, but we are standing here in May of twenty twenty four and we still haven't had any improvements to it. One good note, though, on the Tech dot permit, I have been working with John and other city staff members and contacting Tech dot. And as of May third, two Fridays ago, we finally got an approved permit. So I want to share that it takes a very long time to get that, maybe not as long as it did take. But the city does have a permit and they're ready to move forward with the construction of at least the FM four oh seven portion of Pioneer Road. It took us a little over three years to be able to get to this point. We have a permit in our hands, ready for construction and ready to move forward. There are timelines on those. Usually you get about six months from the issuance of that permit to begin a, to hold at least a pre-construction meeting or begin construction before they can rescind it and ask you to start the process over again. That helps say to Tech dot from the fact that you don't say, hey, here's my plans. This is what I want to do. You hold on to it for two years and things change, not only on your project, but around where you're looking to help. Over the last three years, staff and myself, the Checka Coke now Westwood, we have had several meetings with franchise utilities. I am holding weekly email get togethers with the with the power poles, co-serve those power poles on Pioneer Road. I've asked them to put plans together to move their power poles so that they're out of the way of any drainage improvements and out of any ditch lines that we need to have cuts adequately, hold water that's going to flow up and down Pioneer Road. We've met with Lackland. That's a big topic of conversation with the Lackland Holdings or the Fairview Meadows developers. We've had many conversations with them about what they're responsible to do, not only in their initial Fairview Meadows phases, one through five, but they're also presenting an additional area to the north that called Fairview Meadows North and what that looks like from their standpoint and how they're financially responsible to assist in getting this road paved. And same with Tech dot, over the last three years, we've been talking over and over, trying to make sure that everything's aligned and everything's ready to go so that once funding is in order and a thumbs up and green light from council is given, city staff and myself can move forward discussing with contractors on how that can be upgraded. Tech dot program, as I mentioned, I spoke on it briefly. We finally got the permit. We had to do the same thing whenever we went to Grand Road and we paved the entrance to Grand Road in the first eight hundred feet, I believe. That was paid for through a chapter three eighty agreement with the concrete batch plant that we have off of Grand Road. I forget their name, but there's a concrete batch plant over there that helped us out with that. We did the same thing, jumped through all the Tech dot hoops, followed their rules and regulations. It did everything that needed. The point of this permitting, as I mentioned, we are connecting to a state-funded highway. It's to protect their systems. They call them on-system roads. FM four oh seven is an on-system road that is owned, operated, and maintained by Tech dot. They review construction plans. I put together a traffic impact analysis that will show what paving that road going from gravel to an asphalt paved road will look like. All of the requirements within their right of way is designed to the Tech dot standards. Tech dot will oversee construction inspection in their portion of the road to make sure everything is done for Tech dot standards. And then what, again, like I mentioned, once awarded, permits do have a timeframe generally from the day of awardance till you begin construction. They try to put a six-month shot clock on there to keep everything running smoothly. Construction, what the exploration did on the Tech dot permit, it would be very beneficial to begin construction on the Pioneer portion or the FM four oh seven and Pioneer driveway acre portion of Pioneer Road. We are just looking to get this portion of the road taken care of. It's been a discussion for almost five years now on how is Pioneer Road going to get paved. It's one of the last city streets, I believe only one of the two city streets left that are city homes that are still gravel. John spoke on the maintenance that is continuous through every big rainstorm and several times throughout the year that Public Works has to spend their time and resources and obviously city funds to keep patching up these holes and filling Pioneer Road with gravel that just eventually ends up in the channels and the creeks that run underneath Pioneer Road due to the large amount of water that does flow from the western side to the eastern side. Reminder, Pioneer Road is going to be done on a phased manner. We have, I've had many meetings with John and Wise County as well on how they could try to help assist the city to help lower the overall cost on this road to make it more affordable, but also make it an phased approach that will be satisfactory to city standards. As mentioned, Lackland Holdings, which is in charge of, the developer in charge of Fairview Meadows, we've had a lot of meetings with them for their first agreement. They are in charge of paving the limits of phase one through five that touches Pioneer Road. That's not the entire part. That's about two miles is Pioneer Road that we're discussing. Maybe two thirds of a mile touches their first five phases. They have a Fairview Meadows North portion that's a lot smaller based off of the density of their neighborhood. And at that point in time, we have now implemented transportation impact fees that were not in place whenever the first agreement was signed in twenty nineteen or whenever it was that that was done. But through our discussions with John and Tech dot and the county and the developer, we came up with an idea and a plan of how we can phase this out and how it can lower the impact to the city's, city's big talent. Okay, that's the end of my presentation. I just wanted to share a few numbers. John asked me to share with y'all. Part of also what I do when I'm looking at, I don't just do the engineering and design of the roads. I help with the funding portion, a big portion of being able to get a road reconstructed, figuring out where the dollars are going to come from. With all the conversations we've had with people involved on Pioneer Road, we're looking at a cost estimate of approximately three point one million, which is a lot of money for for a roadway, but it will take care of majority of all of the drainage ways and will take care of the pavement to a city, a city standard that will work for the city. Of that, based off of the way that the initial agreement is put together for Fairview Meadows phases one through five, their portion versus the city's portion of where their properties touch Pioneer Road, of that three point one million, we're looking at about two million being Lackland's requirements and the remaining one point one million being city requirements. Our previous discussions with John is that now moving forward, we have this development that is coming to council after me to discuss Fairview Meadows North. We now hold traffic impact fees. We adopted the new rate back in October of twenty twenty three. For now, every residential lot, they are, you can charge up to three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars per residential lot that pulls a building permit within the city limits. This new development of Fairview Meadows North is now on the city limits, so we're now able to obtain these. With this being so closely related to Pioneer Road, we have discussed fronting these impact fees. Typically, when a development comes along, they do not pay for that impact fee until they pull their building permit and they're getting ready to start going vertical and they put, they put in their impact fee one by one. We have placed, we have placed an item within the new amendments to Fairview Meadows that they are responsible to pay half of what Fairview Meadows North is looking to build to pay that upfront. Should that be paid upfront to the city, the city's portion from one point one, we're looking at, sorry, the density of Fairview Meadows is approximately three hundred sixty homes. Times that by impact fee amount, I'm looking at about one point four million in roadway impact fees that should be collected out of this development. With myself and John discussing that the city does not have funds to properly pave Pioneer Road for the engineering plans, we have discussed putting up, fronting that fifty percent from the development that will help bring the one point one million cost down to about three hundred and fifty thousand using that help of that fifty percent. This is a very reasonable amount that the city should be responsible for. I think it's very beneficial to know that we've been looking at ways to try to get this taken care of. This has been my very first task and it'd be nice to help have it checked off. But I'm doing what I can to help get, keep this project moving forward. Keep it, keep everything going with all my coordination between John, franchise utilities, the county, and Tech dot. We've been doing what we can to get just another road inside of New Fairview paved and give it to city standards and not just be a gravel road like that is a burden on the Public Works Department and is a constant drain of city funds and also resources that has to keep being put together just so it's traffic for the west and such. And with that, I stand for any questions that we'd like to ask, but that's not in Pioneer Road discussion.
Your presentation. Spence?
I have a question. You said it took a figure about three years to get the permission from Tech dot. If we don't, either six-month requirement is it going to be three years? Either six-month requirement is it gonna be three years or? We're we're gonna.
We surely hope not, but um. From what we've discussed with many other cities and other people that have had to go through permitting, it takes a while. Um the Wise County Director Office. Isn't the largest, it doesn't have maybe the staff resources, but it does take a while. Um thankfully. The plans and everything are put in place to their standards and their specifications. But jumping back in that queue and waiting our turn to get reviewed and make sure everything's there, making sure they don't change any standards from what has been approved already. Uh we could potentially look at upwards of twelve months to eighteen months to try to get that permit issue back to the city again.
So councilman, if I do want to make sure you're clear on what this agenda item is. As Riley told you, we finally received that Tech Stop permit to be able to touch their right of way. In talking to Riley, there is a farmer that's got a driveway that's in the way of where we're gonna be connecting that four oh seven. In Pioneer Road. Yeah, so we'd have to remove that and he's agreed to allow us to move that driveway down. So that he can access his property a little further down Pioneer Road instead of being right at the intersection, which is good. Uh and Riley's recommending that we go, was it three hundred?
Three hundred.
About three hundred feet down Pioneer Road. So we'll be doing the Tech Stop apron along with about three hundred feet into Pioneer Road and then. The drive or the driveway uh for the farmer to be able to access his property out of Pioneer Road. That's all we're needing at the very moment, otherwise this Tech Stop permit that we have will end up expiring. And as you've heard, it's a lengthy process that to go back. I'm more concerned that the longer we wait and the more that Fairview Meadows continues to grow. Tech Stop is going to require us, the city, to do some improvements to four oh seven. Like a left-hand turn lane and a deceleration right-hand turn lane based on the UTIA that they'll ask us to do. And if that's the case, then we are gonna definitely bust the budget on being able to do that because we're gonna have to require a right-of-way. As well as now make these improvements to four oh seven, which if you have all have been following, that section of four oh seven is gonna go away. When they finally do the realignment of four oh seven because they're moving the four oh seven bridge over two eighty-seven further south. So right where four oh seven touches Pioneer Road, instead of it continuing to purr like it does northward. They're just gonna keep going straight into that field and go across and build a bridge there. And I know what's gonna happen. Tech Stop is just gonna turn around and give that old four oh seven to the city and say it's now a city road. Good luck. Have have fun with that. Um so the question that I'm needing answered and the motion that I've got written for you here is. For, I need to understand if you guys are okay with Riley and I continuing to work on putting bid documents together and putting the bid documents out so we can bring you back. The bids, you're talking to Riley right now, his best estimate is we could probably get this section done for a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And if that's the case, we have the money in hand right now from our bond funds that we've had savings. Uh you remember you issued three, three million, three more five million dollars in CO bonds. But we've had some savings in the projects that we've done so far in Chisholm Hill, both the drainage and the road. Plus, we've been earning some pretty good interest in our um investment pool. So we have the monies on hand and it comes in around that price point for us to go ahead and pay to get that section done. That way we get it done and over with. We don't lose the Tech Stop permit. We don't go through that whole process again and risk having to do even more work down the road. And then whatever probably happens with how Pioneer Road finally gets approved down the road is is another discussion entirely. My concern right now more is trying to, now that we've got the Tech Stop permit, we want a six-month clock. Try and bring something back to you all so you can decide if you want to go forward or let's get it done before we uh they the permit expires. So that's the discussion we're having tonight.
Oh, man. This right here is horrible dangerous. So the gravel, I have a great last plate collection. If you take this curve off of four oh seven, a problem with that car, they could be fast, but it will probably lose ground with here. They end up right here. I probably have ten or fifteen miles on it.
I have a.
They end up in there. And then two of our cars, uh they go right through here, but they got stops on them. Too much of the way, I think it stops on out. This is when they hit that gravel, that can't turn. Uh it's dangerous, but also uh we all already said multiple times, there's eight homes on Pioneer Road that are in the city limits. My family control is a point percent of that and I will not. Think that I won't spend the tax burden, pay the thing out, city's budget, that's now. Road's been horrible for years, did research. Well, later only Dickie and my father spoke to the council in nineteen ninety-seven about falling Pioneer Road, how bad it was. And that has been done since then except for dumps of gravel on the way down. But I'm okay with that before I spend. I mean, I don't mind spending somebody else's money. Last one, I first started right.
Yeah, first, yeah, against, yes.
Dangerous things to be done. It is, like I said, it is dangerous to me. And my job said, the new four oh seven is gonna go kinda at the edge of that tree line. South. So uh but yes, that that necessarily. Uh I have a court of motion.
It's not.
I could do that. It scares me every day unless I'm in school, I'm sorry.
Well, since I have a broken, I have a cracked windshield because somebody turned in there too quickly. And I moved to approve the moving with the moving forward with getting out the reconstruction of Pioneer Road at FM four oh seven. Per the issuance of the Texas Department of Transportation permits.
Okay.
Those ever say that?
I suppose.
That's what you mentioned.
Thank you, Riley, sir.
Thank you, Harold.
Yeah, we moved to receive the fairback on matters involved in Fairview Meadows. I received the center act on the third amendment to the development agreement of Fairview Meadows.
Uh thank you, Mary. I'm gonna go ahead and I'll start this and I'm gonna turn it over to the developer who's here.
Yes, is Landon here? Is anybody?
Oh, okay, all right. Uh it's Landon with uh Lackland uh holds. Uh just a little bit of background history. On December of twenty eighteen, the city council passed a development agreement with uh Lackland uh Fairview LLC. For the Fairview Meadows development, uh under the Texas Local Government Code, this was a six hundred and thirty-four acre, single-family. Residential development projected to build out five hundred and fifty homes in five phases. Uh the Fairview Meadows developer was successful in creating the new Fairview Municipal Utility District number one through the Texas Legislature. And therefore they were able to go ahead and start issuing uh bonds uh under that mud. To start the infrastructure work uh for both the roads, the drainage, the water, and the wastewater. Now, no part of this property of this first five phases is located within the city limits. It's located in our ETJ. Uh it also, they have their own CCN. That's the Certificate for Convenience and Necessity. For Water and Wastewater Services that they provide uh to their uh mud, their utility boundaries. Um. On October of twenty twenty, uh the council had a discussion regarding extending the mud boundaries. To approximately three hundred and thirteen acres inside the city limits. And on November of twenty twenty, the city council did in fact approve the extension of the mud boundaries into the city limits, these three hundred and thirteen acres. The developer mentioned that he would come back at a later time to give the council the proposed development of those three hundred and thirteen acres. Uh and he in fact has come to talk with the council on two past occasions now and identified those three thirteen acres as Fairview Meadows North. Uh the, they are asking for some additional uh increases in the debt. Uh that is currently allowed at forty million for their infrastructure. Uh they're wanting to increase that possibly up to ninety-one to be able to finish out the phase five and be able to conduct the Fairview Meadows North. Reconnected to their uh not only their road and drainage infrastructure, but also their water wastewater uh infrastructure. Uh they've also talked about how they can assist the city in moving forward with the uh reconstruction of the drainage. Uh and the road or Pioneer Road, which is a presentation you just heard from Riley. Uh they are also looking at um. Building a playground and walking trails as well as donating uh thirty-seven acres of green space to the city uh. With the, as part of the development agreement. Um they, the reason that you're having to look at two different documents, one is the amendment, third amendment to the. Development agreement and the other one is the agreement for the funding and escrow fund. As Riley mentioned to you earlier in discussing with the developer. They are willing to put up fifty percent of the transportation impact fees that the city would be collecting within those three hundred and thirteen acres. And put that up front to help pay for the city's portion of Pioneer Road. And then after that, they'll pay the remaining amounts as is typically handled, as Riley mentioned. When a builder comes to pull the building permit, that's also when they're assessed the transportation impact fee. Well, under the current density being proposed of three hundred and sixty-four lots, that would translate, fifty percent of the transportation impact fees. Will translate into six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in change that will be put into an escrow account. For the city to be able to use only on Pioneer Road. So as Riley mentioned earlier, right now we're looking at a price point. Um somewhere around a a million dollars because we are, that's a term used value engineering, the southern segment. We cannot afford the drainage, so we're just gonna do some minimal pavement work to the southern part. That's the part from the. Southernmost entrance of the development off Pioneer Road going south to where it starts to purr off to Pioneer Road again, headed to two eighty-seven. So that one, we're not going to make those improvements as designed right now because we just don't have the funds. We're gonna concentrate on making sure we do it uh correctly all the way from four oh seven down to that. Southern entrance of of the Fairview Meadows uh development as it stands today. So that's basically the uh the items of the amendments uh that's in the development uh uh agreement. We're also cleaning up some of the language as it relates to the first two amendments that were done uh for this development. And uh with that, I want to turn it over to uh Landon who has a a brief presentation that he wants to give to you. I'm I'm truly happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh I didn't know what the Riverside Home Builders uh, I think I've been before everybody, because I've got a, we have been council member. Uh this is my third time, but I'm gonna give the same presentation I gave. I had a few additional slides to address some of the. Concerns that have been brought to our attention since our last meeting, but first thing I would do is everyone have a big layout of laws. Or would you like a bigger layout of the laws now?
Okay, thank you.
If on a. It hurts my eyes to make the assumption that you're all, and this is what you have in the presentation. We'll see you at a big. Right. Uh I think I, you're welcome to have them in here.
Thank you.
So yeah, um once again, most of the slides are the same ones I went through the last time, uh a little bit about the history. So I started talking to John and city staff about, you know, what our plan was for north and then obviously that in conjunction with Pioneer Road. I want to say I went back and looked at the June of last year, we had our very first conversation. So we were about a year into just conversations, but. I came to council in October of twenty-three. I didn't have a presentation to that point. Frankly, we didn't even have a layout. We were just throwing the idea of increasing density in exchange for getting Pioneer Road built. Blackwater Charity worked to that project. It's just a general idea before council and we were, you know, giving the green light, proceed with thoughts. And then came back a couple of months ago, February, gave four or less the same presentation, uh but I'm gonna read through it again. Please interrupt me anytime with questions. Uh both of you have seen this before, but. Uh for our new councilman, we're happy to answer anything. I don't wanna make any assumptions, so you might not be square. Uh so yeah, Riverside Home Builders, as John mentioned, we're the builder developer of Fairview Meadows and uh I think we all. Yeah. Go ahead and tell us, Mr. Sorry. We'll say that's fancy. Uh for the city. Who's our, sorry. Uh so yeah, Fairview Meadows North. So the proposal would be two phases, three hundred and sixty-four homes with minimum lot sizes of a hundred and twenty feet by a hundred and sixty feet. So a total of nineteen thousand two hundred square foot lots. Uh and then.
Sorry, I have to mention again.
Uh one hundred and twenty feet by a hundred and sixty feet. Uh and I added this bullet point from our last presentation, you know, I know uh we wanna kind of have an idea what we have. Right now, in the development agreement, we have a minimum of thirty thousand square foot lots, but we don't have any sort of minimum block minimum width spelled out.
Steve, we have a presentation here in front of you right here, next to the guy. Uh oh. Uh actually. All right.
Well, you're good. So one thing that we talked about the last time I came before you, that I wanna reiterate with our new councilman, where it's. You know, the hundred and twenty foot lot size, although it's not a minimum spelled out in the development agreement, internally, that's been our internal for law. And that's mainly to do with the local feel of the subdivision, right? When you get, you know, a hundred and twenty feet of balance, you can make a lot from hardcore plants and. And still have a good opportunity being on top, but with your side entry garage, which is, you know, usually a big factor in the local feel of community, right? When you go, you see the really high dense stuff in the city, you got the garages in the front, right? That's supposed to be to associate with that high density developer. Uh so that's, that's the reason for the hundred and twenty. And in conversations with staff and and council in previous meetings. It was very clear that the main thing uh that, or any other consideration about increasing density, we wanted to keep the local feel of community the same. So we proposed a hundred and twenty foot minimum dwell line with what we're currently doing in Fairview Meadows. So really, the difference in the lot size is the backyard. And I mentioned that uh the February meeting and I handed out my spot, um we did a big study, excuse me, uh like research on what customers' wants and needs were. Um and one of the feet, some of the feedback we got was about lot size, you know, the one acre lot minimum. Just to kind of give some background, that's an imposed minimum septic, right? Uh well, you know, everybody lives out in the country knows you gotta have acre minimum lot size for your septic uh aerobic septic system. Well, in Fairview Meadow, we have a sewer system, we have a wastewater treatment plant, so just like if you were in the city, you don't have a septic tank in the back. You've got just your whole backyard usable space, right? Most of the time you've got maybe a third or a quarter of the yard. It's totally unusable because you're spraying your septic in it, right? Should hopefully not be using it um too much anyways, but. That was something we noticed about Fairview Meadows is the lot sizes with no septic, a lot of the backyards, it will be unkept. It comes about the HOA, if you boast to mow that back part of the yard because right there is thirty thousand square foot yard and acre yards a lot to maintain for a lot of people. So this was partially part of uh the decision to cut some of the depth off the yards and then the other part was the mine spot survey I mentioned earlier where. Cost of everything with portability and all the other issues, you know, a lot of people and then just from a general maintenance standpoint, a lot of people want respondents. These are respondents, the existing customers that live on an acre. The constant feedback was, you know, they'd be really happy somewhere around the half acre. Because that gives them enough room for the shop, cool, like for the dog to run, but it's a little less to maintain on a day-to-day basis. So there was a lot of thought, uh I guess maybe the point I wanna get across of where we came up with that lot size. It wasn't, we just pulled out a hat, right? If you go look at other city zonings, you're not gonna find a hundred and twenty by a hundred and sixty lot size, just got any city ordinance anywhere in North Texas that I'm not. None of where it, it's very odd lot size, uh so there's, you know, there was some thought behind that, but. Anyways, the home sizes, you know, put another bullet point. So these will be the exact same floor plan lineups that we have in Fairview Meadows. So that was another concern. Are we gonna get smaller homes? We're gonna get less nice homes. None of those changed. Still be held to all the masonry requirements in the development agreement, be held to all the minimum square footage requirements in the development agreement. Everything remains the same and internally it's our intention to continue to build the same floor plans that we have. And then home prices, that's about where we're at now currently. Some of our larger floor plans of the thirty thousand square foot lots are are higher than six hundred, but for the most part, that's. It's still on about on par um for where home prices are in the existing Fairview Meadows. And then once again, this is, although we are in the city, the the mud, the districts itself will serve for water sewers. There's no expectation for the city to force. It's been mentioned, the uh the dedication of the park land. Once again, that was the potential uh discussion we had with staff about, you know. Once again, that was the potential uh discussion we had with staff about, you know, we're gonna. Pitch this idea of increasing density. We want to maintain, you know, that we'll build that green space. And so this was, this is part of that discussion is dedicating a large green area for future, you know, we're gonna. Part of the agreement is that we'll build a parking lot and a playground and walking trails, but then we will, it will be a city park open to the public. Not just to the residents of Fairview Meadows North, Fairview Meadows. That's one distinction in our parks. And all our amenities now are all exclusive to the residents there in Fairview Meadows. So I know that was something that was important to staff, was having some place, you know, near the thirty seven acre green space for not only our residents, but any citizens that live in the county. Um and then, of course, uh we talked about this uh kind of joint effort. Uh between Blackwood and the city and funding the payment of Pioneer Road, that Riley mentioned has been an ongoing topic for for a while. Uh so those are all kind of highlights as far as like the community itself, what we propose, what we discuss in past meetings. Once again, please, please ask me any question you've got. So back to the property. So this is same area that most of capital is seen outlined in red. This is what we'll refer to, referred to Fairview Meadows North, that is three hundred and thirteen acres all in your city limits, uh set to city fair. Need see to the south, all existing Fairview Meadows, bases one through five, and then of course, Pioneer Road.
Have a question for you.
Can I? I will, I just feel.
Can you talk to your closest neighbor?
Uh we haven't had any conversations. Um they, I, well, we, they kind of say, everybody else about meeting. Got to that point where notices are sent out. I know they're trying to sell. And they have their house on the market. That's just about a month ago.
Yeah, that's one of the south, one of the dollars, mayor.
Oh, that neighbor. I guess I have, but I have not reached out to him on outside of his official capacity. I guess if you'd like to speak to Mayor now, there's a chance.
And I have some concerns. Uh city concerns, personal concerns. Yes, one concern I have city-wise, uh. That Robinson was in the original plan. I did not like the coal sites. Personally, I didn't like the coal site. Would that let any have a house on the other, just pull up about ten square meters, I mean, lots of runoff and like. So I mean, that's personally, uh other other thing personally, uh Corrine. Just, just yesterday, um. By a new, a new wall turned loose and a lot, and it jumps. A fence this tall, it's still all filled, jumps three more fences and. I called him right there and he was. But he's gone, walked right up to him, but I only let him in the trailer and held him back there. So I mean, that's, that's a concern I have. It's fair, citizens of Fairview Meadows are gonna think it's wild, let's have our cows move down the streets and still see.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the first time that's happened in the.
A couple of lightning storms ago, I, the cows that's on the other side ran through. Two fences to get him to my side, so I know they won't be there, but now I could do the same thing. So I mean, that's a concern I do have. But I, I put up a whole new fence inside mine, I like the fence, but in case that, kind of calm it down in case it does happen.
Sorry, I have a question actually, and I don't know if this is a question we could ask, but since somebody, um, you know. A resident of Fairview Meadows here addressing concerns, um. I just kind of want to get your thoughts on some of those concerns that are being addressed or look at issue in. I don't know if you know anything right at this moment.
Yeah, uh I've got that in Slack. Can we get there? Sure. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question. That's all right. I'm happy to look to it now.
No, no, just leave it there. I just wanted to make sure that.
Absolutely. I'm gonna do that.
So you have more of your presentation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, this, what you're seeing so far is the original, what the one I presented back in February. And this is what you've all got in front of you. This is just a full layout. Um, yeah, I think we we talked about. And they're not to the north, so that's the damage you're concerned. We had them all running north and into the neighbors. This is a revised.
For me, is I gained one more house on the thirty plus, a couple of sack, that's an house, right? This, with the hundred and twenty foot, I have the same number, none of the neighbors. With the existing plans I did in the new plan, uh. But I will tell you, Sunday was the first time I've ever been on. This property here in my life, it's fifty six years old. That's a beautiful property. Usually you can get to, you had to get to it on the rebel crossing behind that building and run it in order to. The grill crossed me out and kind of let it land over in a bind.
Yeah, that is pretty big. So, um, and I just, I think we talked about this last council, let's see how the council member. So this is a preliminary layout and, you know, there's a lot of engineering that's going to be done. Obviously, we're gonna have to run all our things through Riley and through the city. So what you see today is not exactly what it's going to look like when it's inevitably done, but. It is, you know, our best guess at this point, but there's a lot of checks between now and the time this thing's actually built before. You know, there may be some things that don't look exactly the way you'd like to see it today, but will look different now. Any changes we make throughout the city, but they're all, they're still held to the same lot size. It's no, the lot size can never go down. They're gonna be smaller than whatever it's free to. It's the actual configuration of the lots, papers with more information from engineer.
Well, along that same line, on the uh third amendment. Section three point zero two S, number four, says a site plan shall not be required. I wonder why site plan is not required. It says, site plan shall not be required for in-city property or required to be attached to any ordinance adopted by the city council. During the section, we point to T and T deals with the zone.
Let me ask our senior planner, uh Stephen Cook, if he can maybe address site planning.
So site plan is a little bit different than, say, a concept plan or a class or something to that effect. Yeah, this is, since it is in-city property, what we're talking about is the development agreement at this point. We move forward with this project, it needs to get rezoned as a plan, as a uh uh plan development. Because it doesn't meet the type of standards that your current zoning ordinance would have. There will have to be a uh development plan, where the lots are going to be and and how they're going to be laid out. But a specific site plan is to how uh 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 say a construct, a commercial building, which is not part of this project. Where the roads are, how the parking lot's going to be, that is not part of this development agreement, it's not part of it. Typically, residential developments do not require a a site plan. So this is, this is uh uh inappropriate with it. You as a council will see, if moving forward, you'll see a uh development plan as part of the uh uh plan development. You will also see a preliminary plan that will come through for the entirety of the property. And then you will see individual final plots for uh each section as they move forward to uh to development. And those final plots will get reported with Wise County, and then they're able to sell uh sell individual lots.
So what happens if we don't like the preliminary or final plan? How much?
The preliminary or final plot has to be uh in uh compliance with whatever concept plan is approved by your zoning ordinance. Otherwise, it gets turned down.
Is this a concept plan?
That's just the concept plan as 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 moving forward. As the gentleman explained, this is before they've done any engineering. As we move forward with the with the uh entitlement of the property, we're going to need to see something that is going to be approvable. By you as the city council, so then therefore, they can come up with a preliminary plan that is engineered. So we won't want to see, this is what we approved as our zoning, this is what we're going to get with our preliminary plan, otherwise they have to go back and reengineer. You, sir.
And if I could mention, in the agreement, the layout uh specifically lot size, and that's to cover all of that, right? The city knows, no matter what the reconfiguration is on the concept plan, so let's come back to the city, but it certainly can't be below the standards that are agreed to in the agreement. To the park, so yes, that uh northern part, and then you can see the kind of creek that we entered through, that's the proposed thirty seven acres combined. Uh for the walking trail.
And the walking trail is kind of leading the whole lane?
Yes, that's the plan, no. Plan would be to to establish a walking trail kind of in that green area and then, you know. What's kind of some sort of safety crossing right there, um where the bases connect and then on down. On down to the south.
Yeah, I have this thought of, uh and it's not part of this, and it's probably addressed somewhere else, but this. From here, are you still there? There's nothing. He looks bad, really, whatever, is there? Is there a plan for that?
There is, yes, we.
Because I spent a lot of money building a bridge and there's a whole bunch of perfect bridge.
Yes, yeah, we're we're addressing, I know that's something that's been brought to the city's attention, it's been brought to our attention. Frankly, it's just been a little too wet the last month, I'm getting out there and do much of anything, but this time of year, we tend to get those calls on. Drainage and mowing especially because it's stayed wet for a month and it's hard to get equipment in, so this is the time of year where we typically see that.
Look, look this part, have some kind of engineering, because right now it's just raw the way it was the day.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that's it, sorry. Yeah, that's in phase five, excuse me, I was about to come out drainage series. No, sir. So that is just packed right now.
Yeah.
And we recently received approval of our plans to start phase five, which is that portion you're referring to. And uh have been that, I think our bids came in on Friday, so we're hoping in the next two, three months, we'll be clearing and rubbing. And we won't have that problem anymore. You'll have, you'll have us next door to you.
That difference that you'll build, it's apple soon.
Yeah.
Because nothing's been done.
Yeah, we've been made aware of that, and we'll get out there as soon as things dry up.
Another question, forgive me, if this is in your presentation. Hundred and thirty six escrow homes is what you're wanting. Residents in Fairview Meadows have concerns with their water issues. And have additional homes will feel like that will effectively impact them.
Yes, sir.
What's your answer to that?
Uh great segue, thank you. Let's talk about water. So water, yes, um. Yes, we have had issues with water in the past, and I will, you know, we've been, as a company, I don't think that's a secret to neither of us that's here. They certainly are aware of that, and I'd like to go through the history. This slide is very wordy. My wife, who does a lot of presentations, said, I cannot believe you're gonna go in there with that slide, do it because it needs to be on one, so everyone can see. Kind of the whole picture, because there's a lot going on. Uh so I want to start with just a distinction between T C Q requirements and practical reality, right? Uh and I think it's important to start there because everything we've done to this point, as far as how we designed the infrastructure, how we built the infrastructure, to how much. Everything was done based on T C Q requirements. Uh and then there's the practical reality of usage and what residents actually do versus what T C Q tells you you're supposed to do, right? So um I just want to kind of give that preface because it'll help paint the picture. So we started having our first set of issues probably around the twenty twenty two timeframe, uh mostly in regards to capacity. So at that time, we had two Trinity wells, and just so I make sure they're going the right, so the Trinity is the deeper aquifer. Your Biloxi is your shower zone. I'll talk a little bit about this uh that the February presentation. Kind of the rule of thumb is your Trinity is where you get most of your capacity, that's what's, you know, the water gets thicker, you get more water. And then the, and then the Biloxi is, yeah, as you go deeper, as everyone knows, the water quality suffers. But as you go more shallow, the water quality gets better, but the amount you can pump and produce becomes less, that's the Biloxi is less water, higher quality, right? So the initial two wells, we had two Trinity wells um on the system around that twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three timeframe. Twenty twenty three specifically, we were in the process of getting permits for wells number three and wells number four. But obviously, we were still, we had residents, people still use our water. And so we had several instances in the summer of twenty twenty two, uh even after asking for, you know, restrictions abuses, uh level two restrictions. Uh basically drawing the storage capacity of the system down to, you know, next to nothing, to nothing. And I've written, I've mentioned about T C Q requirements versus reality. So the T C Q requirement for water to serve a residential neighborhood is point six gallons per minute. That's how much the well can produce per connection. So everything you, when you hire engineers, you call your consulting, now Stephenville, they design all our plants, all our water wells, tanks, everything. When they design everything, they design it to some amount of, obviously, base level T C Q standard and then some amount of, you know, probably twenty percent, whatever contingency or related. So everything we had designed and the connection count we had in this twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three timeframe was based on that board with plus level five. Residents of Fairview Meadows were using three to four times that amount on average. And so the issue became, we had enough well storage capacity, enough well production capacity to meet the needs for every requirement on the books. But our usage, our actual usage of residents was way beyond that. And so what that caused us to have to do is run our two wells twenty three and a half hours a day approximately. Every day for nine months. And unfortunately, wells were not designed to operate that way. So we started having issues with the aesthetics because of that. Um and in that timeframe, we, you know, called every favoring we ever had from T C Q in the ground. And we're able to fast track two additional well permits uh to get wells number three and number four built, permitted in the system. So that's some of the history, um as to, you know, some of the issues we had. You know, I've been very transparent with that, I believe, with our residents and all that can go through, just. What we've spent since that issue arose and where we're at today. So it could be, top is, as I said, since twenty twenty two, we've invested about five point six million dollars in additional water infrastructure. So once again, we had two wells, sorry, I went through a bit, twenty twenty two, we had two Trinity wells, one water plant. Our ground storage tanks and water plant number one. Since that time, we've added three additional wells, two additional Trinity wells, we call well three, well four. Uh and then we actually just finished drilling, John, I'm sorry, rings out, when we did our final inspection of phase four, we just finished our first Biloxi well. Um unfortunately, the testing and the timeframe it takes to get all that approved through T C Q, we won't actually have it in the system. Until probably around September this year, so we missed the summer window, but I'll get to why that's not too big of a concern. But we're really excited to get the test results back on quality, right, that I can explain, the whole purpose of drilling the Biloxis. Uh is to mix it in with the water system and try to improve uh quality of water. So three new wells, we uh built an entire new water treatment plant, that's water treatment plant number two. Um and then we added three additional ground storage tanks for an additional two hundred and twenty five thousand gallons uh total capacity. Uh back to T C Q requirements versus reality, T C Q requirements of two hundred gallons per resident of storage capacity. So right now, I think we have, in the next bullet point, about three hundred and seventy eight thousand gallons of storage. Were about, I think it's like twelve hundred blocks or the T C Q required capacity, that was practically happening. Since we've built these tanks, added these wells, we've been able to keep all the tanks, even at peak usage, which obviously we're about to come into. The real peak usage, right, at the summer, um but so far, we've been able to keep all the tanks at, you know, right out, they're all twenty foot tanks. Right at about eighteen, sixteen to eighteen feet during peak use, so we're nowhere close to max now. Uh the ability in the system to provide water. Now, obviously, we'll have to continue to monitor that, we're getting into the time of year where we all know, everybody has water on, all our hot, all those things. So we'll continue to monitor that, that as far as requirement wise, we, we are well ahead of what completely requirement by. And we believe we're well ahead of what our usage will be for residents. Uh and then the run rate on those four wells right now, each one of them, I mean, I think some of them don't even turn on most days. And if they do, like, max, it runs about four, five hours, which is where you want. Perfect world, no, no well runs more than about eight hours a day, like you're working there, right?
So they're saying they're still having water issues, though. Should they still be having water issues?
So. Yeah, well, if I could get, could I just get the, we've got the current, okay, so. Want to go back to production numbers and then we'll talk about quality. So the production numbers, each of the four Trinity wells runs about two hundred gallons per minute. Right now in the system, we have eight hundred gallons per minute capacity, uh that will. Uh, that, well, again, is point six gallons per minute per connection. We have a little less than three hundred residents there today. So the amount of. Production we have per T C Q requirements is about thirteen extra blocks for, once again, that's not to say we won't grow more if we need it, but. We have adequate, uh, capacity for really the entire build out for the T C Q requirements, but we'll continue to monitor. Uh, and then just future. So, you know, obviously we have what we have today, but there's still room for more. So each one of our Trinity well locations. Uh, has the ability to be paired with Biloxi well. Uh, not to say they will, that's all subject to approved, uh, Trinity groundwater district approval. But they are designed in a manner in which if we are given the permit, we have the ability to drill it, setbacks, you know, spacing. Um, so each one of, we only drill one today, and we have, uh, six designated with Berry Meadows North, six designated Trinity Biloxi paired locations. So theoretically, we have the ability to add two more Trinity wells, another, uh, four hundred gallons per minute, and then, you know. That'd be about a map, eleven more Biloxi wells. And I think I put in there sixty to eighty gallons per minute. That's actually what we were expecting, but I believe that well came in a little closer to the fifty five range. Um, and we sent off testing results, so we know quality said that we just had here production right now. They came in a little over the weirdest.
So the extra homes is not going to take away from the current residents.
Really, the story of, of the issues we had in the past where we're at today was a lot of usage. These permits take years to get, you know, when you start the process with T C Q and G E R P groundwater district, what you do, I mean, it takes a year to two years to get those permits. And so when you find yourself in a position like we were in, where you don't have the wells you need to meet the demand that's being had. It's not like you turn on the switch, right? You have to go get those permits. You have to go get all the necessary permits. And so we just, we got caught, uh. Without sufficient capacity, which forced us to run our wells twenty three hours a day, which leads us to the aesthetic and the quality concerns. We'll do my best here. I'm not a chemist, but the, and I think we talked a little bit about IRBs in February, I want to go back to it. So the result of running particularly well one, as hard as we had or as long as we did to meet demand. Was the introduction or exacerbation of, they call IRB or iron related bacteria. And that's something that is not typically found in groundwater. Some of the issues in, uh, getting the aesthetic concerns treated or just. Understanding what it was because we, I'm backing it, but I just really want to make sure council has a really good understanding of, of the whole picture here. So the systems, the water plants, the wells, the tanks, they're all technically owned by the mud, right? The district itself owns it. We built it, paid for all that. District goes and Infomark is the hub. So they're the ones that go out, they take the water samples, they check all the plants daily. They have an onsite person there any time. Anytime we drop the Berry Meadows, you should be seeing Infomark trucks drive right. They're the ones that install meters. They, they function like the city or anybody who owns a water wastewater plant, right? So they are based in Houston. They serve a lot, I think, several hundred, uh, districts. They're a big company. They've, they've got, uh. Plants all over Texas. So when we started having the aesthetic concerns in residents, you know, we turned to them. What is it? You know, they start testing, they start testing. And, uh, it took them a while to basically figure out, is this IRB? And so. There are treatments, there are things that we have been doing, determining that, but it's taken some time to kind of fine tune exactly what that is and what it takes to get the water aesthetics to a place where residents would copy your mission. And I wanted to preface all that and say, throughout this entire process, we have all T C Q tests, any, any sort of. We're talking aesthetics, we're not talking quality. So everything that the water is tested monthly and they send off. All those tests that were required by law, we can pass on all of this. So this is purely, you know, your taste, covering things that, you know, are important. About discounting the importance of that, that I just want to make sure it's clear that at no point in time has the water ever been outside the T C Q requirements of quality.
It wasn't dangerous, it just didn't.
Yes.
Look or taste.
Didn't look or taste.
I freaked out the last time I was, when someone lived by the eighteen, one before that was dug in the duties. We had the same issue, my water smelled bad, tasted bad, living in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm treating, yeah, it's been that way, um, fifty six years old, and then it took a while. It's always, yeah, without a whole lot of treatment system in my garage.
Yes, and so we feel like we've got a really good plan. We've got a good maintenance programs down to the last bullet point, several points. So. The IRB does two things. It causes discoloration and taste concerns. And then from a capacity standpoint, it also has an unfortunate side effect that it gets on the screens of the wells and gucks them up. And so one of our problems was the IRB exacerbated the screen, the water flows through and producing of the well. That bacteria was clogging up those screens. So it was choking the wells back. So back to kind of the past, to the future, right? We were having this issue, having to run these wells. That was causing that film to get out more and more and more, and therefore choking that well down more and more and more of the time. So we've got treatment on all four wells, for IRB specifically. And then once a year, we are having somebody come in and basically doing like a deep clean of the well to keep that bacteria at bay. And our best understanding bringing in, we called T C Q and brought in their experts to come look at it and help us. Obviously, we went heavily on Infomark and they, we went heavier on chemists and, you know, people that are experts in this stuff. And the thing that the biggest take home was get it on a routine treatment plan, we think we've done and successfully done. And then keep it at bay. And the best way to keep it at bay is not overuse the wells, hence the investment in the additional wells. The more, the less we use the wells, further away the IRB stays. And I can, I don't even know exactly why that is. I just, you know, it's something to do, oxygen that's created when you pump those wells really hard, once again, not a chance. Apologize.
So if you continue at the rate of production of, you said three times the required of the T C Q, please get built up completely. Do you feel like you have the capacity to be able to keep up with that?
We do, and that's what we're playing. So we took the historic usage of our existing residents and made that assumption all the way. Now, we hope the conservation efforts, we're about to do Infomark, it's about to do their big summer blast. I think if you, you know, sure, all the Texas, all the water providers do something similar where they talk about. Conservation and, you know, our nearest sprinklers all on the water in the mornings or at night, those types of things. So it's education and it's planning, right? We're trying to help residents understand, you know, the appropriate amount of water to, to water their yards, um, as best we can. And then, of course, just staying ahead of it. That's. Um, that's where we feel like we're at today. Sorry, I wanted to get to real quick before, um, I forget. On the treatment. So we budgeted right now four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year that will be spent on specifically treating the all four of these wells with IRB and any other aesthetic issues that, that may pop up. Um, we take tests, um, twice a month that are just internal, that the people at the plant, they take it and then they just, you know, make adjustments as needed if there are issues or. Levels are off. And then monthly, we do a full test. I don't know if I can.
That's what we're now.
Yes.
Awesome. I think he's asked me. I said, I'm doing so.
I just want to, I saw Riley doing this, so I was.
Go ahead.
Or P O A. So if you go to. Our. So in the interest of transparency, the president, once again, you know, I was talking about, uh, everything we've done, you know, with the aesthetic concerns, it's all been. Per T C Q standards, but of course, we don't want to just leave Berry Meadows. But in the interest of transparency, right, this is something that can set up after, uh, our annual HOA meeting in twenty twenty three. If you go to our. P O A website, every month we take a more than is required T C Q amount of tests on all the water, water quality. All the different chemicals, all the things, things that, all the words I can't pronounce. And they're all all there right here. So if there's any.
You guys. Residents can pull this up anytime that areas perform.
This is, this is, this is on a P O A website. So it's right there for everybody to see. We posted every test from September twenty twenty three to, I think we posted. Uh, April slash week. So if anybody has any questions, anything you can see here, everything's right there. And then they got some info on what, what these sets are, what they say, what they don't say. Uh, we have a letter. To our residents that we're, like, hope that you'll take a chance to read from our under account, making the water better, depending on whatever tastes of, to improve the water.
You can go there. I have to go to our testing pool screen. So, oh, you know, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Oh, do you get it?
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
I am. No, no worries.
So, yeah, that's, and then, yeah, last full point. So every, uh, every single month, we have a sit down with Infomark. We've had this since about the summer of twenty twenty three to go over. Ground storage tank levels, we go over water, water quality test results, everything. And we just keep a really close eye on what they're doing, operating their system. Uh, we ask them to produce any complaints that we give residents, we are aware of any customer issues, you know, all those things. So. Um, happy to answer your questions. Hopefully I've answered most of your questions regarding the water.
I think the only other issue is they keep bringing up the drainage, but I guess we'll get there.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could talk about that now. The, the drainage, you know, it's brought to our attention. John sent us some emails that the residents sent to him. We're working on it. It's, once again, this time of year is always the worst. We've gotten a ton of rain in a very short amount of time. And, you know, until things dry up a bit, which I hope is soon, that it's just good, good to be a challenge to get out there and clean all that out. But it's your typical things, it's still, it's, it's things you see after heavy rain. Uh, you know, you've got phase four that was recently, you know, finished, that there's a lot of dirt has been moved. So it's a lot of your typical, uh, issues you have throughout the course of development. And obviously, we have a large development and we're not going anywhere. So, uh.
Well, once that, once, once that cleaned out and the construction's done, it shouldn't be back to nothing.
Correct. Yeah, the, the, the number one. Thing you have to do to solve almost all your drainage issues is vegetation, right? And until you. Get through the destruction process, you have some time for those ditches to vegetate, and that can be a challenge, right? If you've got, uh, decent sized slopes and things like that. So. It's just a time thing and nobody likes to hear that, of course. You want it done tomorrow, but, um, you know, till we get some vegetation established. That will always be a moving target, but we'll just continue to address.
I guess those are the concerns of the citizens up there now.
Right.
And I'm just trying to give them some state, if we can afford it, there's some sort of.
Right. No, no, I, I, trust me, that's not the only place we're getting those same thoughts. This time of year, it's not great. It's just. Or until things dry up and it's, you know, it's expected and, and we'll get it taken care of.
And this is the one house driving through, trying to, it's a movie, like, it makes more notice, there was, um, it's more. But it's more wet and dirty, you know, with a lot of silting there. There was also, the silhouettes had been run over by a hole because there's quadracks. Straight off the road through the mud on the silhouettes.
People cut them, people.
People are playing in your model.
We've seen it all, but it's important.
Yes, that's what, that's how I have to go by the rules, you know, quadrants, roads, uh, you know, I already have blocked company.
Yeah, I want, please, all, all the questions.
Um, you're gonna build a park for us, right?
Let's play, yes, sir.
We've been warned by Berry Meadows resident that you didn't build a park for them that you were supposed to.
Yeah, okay, yes. Thank you for your question. So back to the HOA meeting in twenty twenty three. So. Obviously, this is all happening, um, you know, at a time when rates are going up, when sales are slowing down, all those things. And, you know, there's so much money in the budget, right? So at that meeting, our owner, Tim Lee, came to the meeting. He wanted to address residents' concerns regarding the water. And I think it was a pretty open dialogue about how do we handle this situation? The question about amenities and parks was brought up and. In that meeting, they discussed the idea that we will, we will go spend whatever it takes to get the water situation figured out, but the. You know, backside of that is it's going to delay some of our plans for the parks. That was a consensus of the road. Get the water solved first, parks next. So where we're at today is we have got a design for that phase two park. Um, it's in phase two, excuse me. Um, and we're hoping we'll be moving forward soon with that, um, or getting bids and try to get an idea of, sort of an estimate of a budget for that. But we actually engaged, uh, HOA has a Berry Meadows ambassadors program. So we started with them, hoping to get some good ideas, try to get the feel, what people want, what they don't want. Uh, that didn't unfortunately very much prove, so we had to just kind of go a little. Way and take our best shot at it and get some designers on it, but.
I was gonna ask you what was gonna be in, in both of the parts, actually.
Yeah, right now we're looking at soccer field, baseball field, uh, playground area, you know, trying to make as much, there's a lot of well sites on that. I think we might have looked at that last council, I can't recall. Uh, or maybe we just started about one stat, but we've got some well sites and some stuff to work around. So we're trying to make as much of it as we can.
And the one in phase two is just for the rest?
That is just for the rest, yes, sir. That is, that we HOA maintain a park, but I'm gonna give the park annexation in our agreement, it becomes a super. But, but that already.
She, she wants to ask you.
Mine ought to ask a question.
Unfortunately, not.
Okay.
I wish.
I'll send an email.
Okay.
This is.
And I did four dollars a victory.
I'm sorry.
Said I did four dollars a victory, like, great engine.
Oh, that was not me. That was, oh, I'm sorry. Doesn't end.
Anything else on water? Just want to throw out, I know I'm talking a lot, so I'll make it quick. Nobody ever asks about sewer because I guess people don't care about it, but. And we do have a wastewater treatment plant. Uh, it is currently, um, managing the existing residents and we are probably about two months away from wrapping up the expansion, which would give us enough to add. Increase in the lockout. We're looking for here in north as well as, you know, if we go with the open. So nobody ever asks about sewer because sewer is one of those things that, until it affects you, you don't really think about it. But, of course, you. Have to make the same plans. It takes a long time to get permits. Everything has to be planned way out in advance for regular sewer.
I guess the, is the sort of plant that's there now is physically, it's not going to get any larger?
Uh, it will get slightly larger. It's a modular plant. They're adding, if, if you're talking about right now, no.
Okay.
You would have asked me that a year ago, yes. But it's already there. They're, they're just finalizing the connections and then there's T C Q permit away from me.
That was why I see, uh, some storage tanks and bunking range around there, what, you don't know what they do.
Uh, they may be just using that pump it out while they're working off from the, I really don't know. But we're not having issues with capacity at that.
And, uh, and it's a package plant, so it'll never, no discharge ever.
Yeah, that would be after discharge permit or we are seeking a discharge permit. Thanks. Anything else? Okay. That's a lot. All right. So let's talk about Pioneer. So I wanted to start with this, just so everybody's clear. Once again, I know clearly we showed everybody a map similar to this February, but. This is in red is the portion of Pioneer that runs Lackland's property. And then you can see the green there, the portion of the road that belongs to the city. I just wanted to start with this and then just see approximately your footage of, you know. Which party has, you know, what amount of red on Pioneer. And to backtrack a little bit on kind of the history, when we had conversations with staff, and I believe this is conversations by residents, there are staff, residents, there's. You can see the issue about not working together on funding Pioneer, right? You've got city, Lackland, city, Lackland, city. And everyone agreed, and we talked about this back in February, it really makes sense for us, United Force, we can go out there and pay more rent if. If, uh, if we want, but then those residents are going to go pavement gravel, pavement gravel, pavement gravel. Right? So I think at least where we left it, I should confirm, I think we all still agree that this only makes sense as a united project, as a joint project, which we. Uh, for this reason, I just want to show this to, where we paint the picture. Uh. So Pioneer project, I will go too far in the weeds on this, Neil, uh, Riley talked a little bit about it, but this is basically an excerpt right out of, uh. Current proposed amendment. And as Riley mentioned, you know, the total cost of the project, and this is with. John did, uh, help us out by getting Wise County to agree to come in and actually handle the labor, uh, or the pouring of the asphalt. So let's say, you know, for. Black one and taxpayer dollars, uh, and that, you know, it's not an easy task. Wise County is, uh, you know, they're a little. A little stingy with their equipment and their time, so that certainly took some effort and that saved us. I think around, around the.
Four and fifty, six hundred, sixteen dollars.
Something like that, off just the total cost of this bill. So, you know, equally beneficial to us as well as the city. But with that, that's, that number removed, so this total is right about three billion. And then as Riley mentioned, the plan to get this done, um, with the city's current budget would be for Lackland to. Go ahead and pay about half of the three hundred and sixty four, you know, call it future lot, uh, road impact fees, stuff like that. And so I think, right, I mentioned it, too much detail, but basically you pull, typically you pay those upon point of permit for apps. Right? So cities collect those over a long span of time. Well, this is something we've staffed and. Right? So cities collect those over a long span of time. Well, this is something we've sat and I discussed, and how do we get this done? City's budget and this was the solution came up, but we'll go ahead and advance those fees. So instead of spending with that five thousand of a lot.
Thirty nine, I think that'd change.
A hundred a lot over a five or six year period, and we're just going to pay all that money in front. That way, it can go towards the city's portion of the cost to pay Pioneer Road. So original right now was, you know, I think it's right at about a million for the city, two million for Lackland. We advanced the roughly seven hundred thousand dollars uh upfront for the impact fees, and that's how you get to that bottom number there. That is uh currently what we're estimating the city's cost to pay for Pioneer Road. We know we've talked about it, but I haven't answered.
On that. And that'd be about a city, I agree, that's the southern portion, correct?
Yes, sir. City, it's the very, very bottom portion per the, the way the uh the initial plans are set up, we're gonna completely redo that railway section and redo the colbers at the bottom. There's a large amount of water that's just there, and that portion of just the drainage colbers would cost the city about six hundred fifty to seven hundred thousand. What I discussed with John, we're gonna keep an eye on it and that portion down there gets very little traffic. It's just right around that bit down there. Um, the city's gonna keep their eye on it and we're going to try to re-credit the railway and put a chip seal on it. And should the city be able to come funding in the future, three, five, however many years down the road, we still have a plan to go for that. We just kind of pulled it out and as John mentioned earlier, values entered, engineered it so that we can get that portion taken care of in the future. But at the ground now, the very bottom portion, which is city, ultimate three, uh, it's looking at just getting a new base, being graded properly, put a ground on it and uh put like a chip seal there on top just so that it keeps the gravel down and not get lost out every small bit of storm.
Or maybe Mr. Garm is grandkids, so if you do the next one, I'm grateful.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Boy, I had a
Yeah, I wish.
I can't give the grandkids.
I'm gonna figure out and go back to show that on the picture. Yeah, basically, the uh, try it all good.
That there with the sound.
We have it. It's probably, but anyways, yeah, point being this was our way of trying to work around what our requirements are to pay our frontage while putting the whole Pioneer Road project start about, you know, it really truly makes sense to be one project. However, we get there, um, I think, you know, rational limits, sentiment is, should be, should be one big project. But that's what we've got, the fuzzy agreement, have to answer questions, have to do whatever. And just to be clear, we're paying half upfront, but we are still paying for three hundred, you know, the remaining one hundred eighty two impact fees. But we just do it like we normally would. We go to full permit for a house, we'll pay with, we'll pay the impact fee at that hour. So this is not a thing that they have in the board. It's just advancing that money upfront so the city doesn't have to issue any debt or take funds elsewhere to pay for this. John, can I have a little thing on that? Um, this three hundred forty four thousand, this is the estimate that I was explaining to y'all earlier. About a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty five thousand of that estimate, we just discussed that you're, you want me and John to go forward with bid, bidding all those documents. So when we finish out that first, the driveway portion connecting to four oh seven and the first three hundred feet, subtract about a hundred twenty five out of that and the city's left with two hundred and twenty to get the remaining portion of Pioneer Road. Per everything that's listed out and discussed in this portion.
So if we wait and collect the impact fees as they fill out with, what does, what does that? How does that affect the numbers?
Uh, well, the the media impact is we don't have, we won't have the funds to do our portion of Pioneer Road when they're getting ready to do their portion. Because there won't be fully the volume of building permits needed for us to get to the just under seven hundred thousand, I think is what I said, and end up to fifty percent of the uh impact fees.
I have a question. What is your anticipated uh completion of the build up for that phase?
But like both phases?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, well, I kept my math. So I think we'll
Do yours that now?
Oh, yeah, I think so. We'll do about four or five starts a month when we get everything developed. And I would imagine phase one is on the ground. I would say, you know, if everything goes as planned and we keep the train moving forward, probably summer of twenty six or seven?
Seven, two years.
Yeah, that would be completed. And the way that we have it in the um agreement right now is we will have complete Pioneer Road, so we'll be the ones responsible bidding and making sure it gets done. And we cannot have our final phase one of Fairview Meadows North accepted until we get that project done. So that was the discussion with staff about then how does the city guarantee, because this project, like I mentioned, has been punted and kicked and you know, left out for a while, how can we guarantee that this is the last time? And that was our guarantee to the city is you can you can hold up our final acceptance therefore, our ability to build houses itself, you know.
So all three phases, you're thinking ten years probably completed on that problem?
Yeah, I'd have to do some math.
Well, yeah, but just ask.
Do about sixty pounds a year.
Alright, so just estimate, we say about, you know, ten, twelve years it will be completely built up. So the answer to that can be if we waited to get it, it'd be ten to twelve years before we have that money to be able to do it, because that's when they were not being.
Right, well, their portion would be completed, but ours would not, because
No, what I'm saying is, is if we waited to collect the impact fees in order to do our portion of the road, it can be ten years before we get that money because by the time we build up, it's because they have to, they pay them as they're starting to build the chops. So it could be ten, eight, ten years to collect that money that they're gonna give us.
Correct. If you're just gonna be relying on the impact fees to pay for this, yes.
The impact fees collected from the other developments, is that money also available to use on this road or is that for something else?
So it's available to be used on this road because if you recall, when you guys approved the impact, you also approved a CIP map that listed which roads would be uh able to utilize those impact fees and Pioneer Road is one of those. As is Grand Road, for example.
So I have permit report today or tomorrow that money can accumulate to be used from Pioneer Road.
That is correct. Or as you guys are doing now, you directed me to, we're currently paying seventy five thousand from that fund each year to help pay for the debt service of the bonds that were issued in twenty twenty three for Grand Road. I believe it was seven hundred and sixty thousand, somewhere around there? So seven hundred sixty thousand with that three point five million was earmarked for Grand Road. And the council decided we're gonna go ahead and pay for that seven hundred sixty thousand debt service out of the transportation impact fee, which you're allowed to do, and therefore it's not being paid out of the general.
That over, that's wrong, sorry, wait. The main benefit of allowing extra houses or allowing amendment three is complete Pioneer Road. That's the main.
No, I wouldn't say, I would say that's one of the benefits already, but there are other benefits. For example, each one of these homes is automatically going to be a property taxpayer in the city instantaneously. They're also gonna be paying the permit fees for they build a swimming pool, do they build a shed, the fence, what have you, right? So they become instant taxpaying residents to the city, unlike the first five phases of Fairview Meadows.
And the park, right? The park wasn't in the initial plan?
No, no, the park is uh all part of getting a disagreement. They don't, they didn't have to do that, but that's part of what they agreed to do uh as as, you know, the terms that I read out earlier about debt service and about finding a road. So yes, it's all part of the struggle to disagree.
So the park was part of the disagreement as well, so that's not, that's one of the benefits.
Right, so now they were planning to build a park and I don't know what all their plans were for the park, but they were planning to develop some of that acreage. But they turned that over to the HOA, which meant only the HOA residents would be able to benefit from that green space until going back to the original agreement back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when the city finally decides to take over Fairview Meadows, then all of that now becomes city property instantaneously.
Uh, you wanted to increase the bond rate from forty to ninety million? Uh, no, ninety million was floated out there, is that your final number you want to float?
I think we're, that's a big hang up. We want to have a conversation. We feel like that gives us plenty of room and, you know, if we do have to add on a lot more of that water infrastructure, we'll have enough body capacity to do so. It's a comfortable cushion, but if that's, you know, something that council wants to take a closer look at, we're happy to do it. That was just approximately where we came out to ensure that we can pay for Pioneer Road and do all the public infrastructure that we need to build for North and the remaining Fairview Meadows and not have to, you know, go back to council requesting additional.
What's the current fund data or what's the, how much available large up there?
Uh, we're approaching the forty twenty dollar now. With all the money. So back, we talked about this in February, that number was based on estimated cost of full build out of the phases one through five in twenty nineteen. So that was three hundred thirteen less acres than we have today in twenty nineteen development prices. I think we all know what's happened since twenty nineteen. Unfortunately, uh, cost of everything just feels like it's if it hasn't doubled, it's gotta be close. And that number is just not, you know, that was an agreeable number in twenty nineteen on phases one through five. But that's a number now that, you know, we we will surpass certainly uh and if we want to continue to move forward, it'll be in speaking.
So is there a maximum that the residents pay the natural tax on the month?
Uh, they pay the the same rate, the the dollar tax rate. So that's the maximum.
By raising this deal, you want to increase their their
One dollar is one grant out and one that cannot increase because that's state law.
Right.
Now, if you do go to ninety million and I got it all figured out here, you have a total of the higher density homes. So you have already five hundred fifty homes planned in the ETJ. And you add three hundred sixty four more homes, that's down to fourteen homes.
We're a little less than that. We'll be at about eight seventy. I I can't, I don't, I think that's what was called out in the original development agreement in twenty nineteen, but our our numbers today will be about eight seventy. That's about how many, with the increased density to North.
If you have a mighty million dollar detriment when your residents sold eight hundred spot, residents only paid a dollar for one hundred dollar valuation, you won't, it'll take a long time for them to pay that off.
Yeah.
In which case, in fact, it'd take over twenty five years without any interest. So that's a lot of money. And then if the city was to average analytics, this is not gonna happen because we'll be taking on a bunch of debt over.
Yeah, and and I know, you know, the ninety million is ceiling, right? Not necessarily, I'm not a content issue, but I hear you.
You're already in forty.
Yeah, I would like to hope uh the the pace of cost increases or flatline at the very least, but yes, I mean, we're we're happy to take a second look at that and that's a part of the agreement that council finds acceptable. That was just a safe number, but we had to try to prevent what happened for having to come back now. We made our best guess in twenty nineteen and then we add in three hundred thirteen acres of land and then the costs, they did. So I mean, that's how we got where we're at.
It's a big number, so I just don't if you gotta have it, you gotta have it, but I just looking to see what the city will get out of this whole deal in the future doesn't look good. I just don't think we're ever gonna see any benefit in the future. So all we're getting is what's currently in the city limits, what that's a benefit does. I think we need to go and try to get as much of the camp back, some systems, get anything from what's in ETJ in the future. Right? That's why I'm in favor of this third amendment. Just because I think we're getting, I mean, also this, the fact, what can you get, what can you do?
Yeah, yeah, with the twenty thirty eight, Jim, is probably what you're referencing, the changes in the laws, the the ETJ. The future of ETJ is obviously a question. So um, you know, it's a good thing for the city that that agreement's in place, right? For for the annexation. Uh, yeah, I mean, we're we're happy to continue to discuss that with council. I mean, the the intention there is just to make sure that we don't do what we did in twenty nineteen.
I don't like one ninety million because I don't think that'll ever be an issue if it went sixty, seventy.
Yeah.
This is never gonna benefit the city. And the stock gonna impact the rest just because they know they're gonna be paying a dollar forever. So.
Yeah, and the inclusion of more lots will be more focused paying down that debt. So that's one benefit that takes existing residents.
That's another good point. The initial one hundred forty six lots, that's fourteen point eight eight percent of the total build out. So that's how much they're gonna contribute paying down.
Yeah. Yeah, and and what is our true plan with the expansion will meet the needs we have currently in TCQ for apartments, needs for water now. You know, obviously, we've discussed, we're gonna continue to monitor usage. We need to drill more wells, we will. But right now, as far as the big ticket infrastructure uh has all been paid for, um, so really, the addition of the homes will just help. Those those dollars get paid off faster, right? Because we spent a lot of the big upfront money to that. Right? From here on out, it's just your your roads and your standard utilities. Um, so those costs will, you know, they'll be paid for whether nor whatever happens there. Um, it's just now there's a chance to divide that pie a little more people.
Are you all with the board?
No, sir. No, no, the board is totally.
I'd like to see that from holiday to get residents on the board, to kind of understand and control.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, everything's public, public meetings, just like councils post above.
Is there a chance to move it to Fairview and so forth?
Uh, if if that's the, if that's the desire of the board, on the boards, I couldn't speak well.
What I'd like to see, I mean, I I don't mind hosting that, but what we need here is to have a board, who knows what is in nineteen?
Or the Dallas.
I think
It's the add, currently they they hold their own. Anything Pioneer or anything else? I've got one more, you know.
Is it a hundred and thirty six houses or a hundred and forty two extra houses?
Uh, I don't know which one was the slide change. So that's
Why is it a hundred and forty two?
Okay, yeah, a hundred and forty two, excuse me. Sorry, this is, once again, comes at one different lockouts in my head.
Math, you know, as you say, the maximum, excuse me, the minimum size is eighty thousand two hundred square feet.
I'm so sorry, it's on the next slide.
Yeah, that's what it is. I'm looking at this for a green dollar.
Yeah, I have the next slide on lot size, and that's my last one, I swear. Other than the pictures of our residents.
Oh, last line.
And then the Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Technological challenge. Okay, lot size, let's talk.
So if you do the math or that comes out to point four four acre is your minimum lot size. Your original lot size was point six eight.
Yeah, there you have it, there you go.
So you're reducing, not cut those things in half. You're taking the length off of lot, the width the same, and just reducing the lot by point two four.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, all we're doing or all we're requesting to do would be basically just a shallow of all the lots. Instead of having this big of a deep backyard, they'd have a shallow or backyard. And we talked about this back in February and I mentioned at the beginning, you know, one thing, once again, thirty thousand square feet, rather large yard, um, you know, it's a constant battle with the back part of the yard, you know, because Riverside, when they finished the homes, when we saw it's just around kind of the typical house footprint. And then it's, you know, all the residents, they like to saw irrigate the remaining, um, and, you know, most of them understandably so, given the size of the lot are sodding and irrigating. So really, we we see a lot in in Fairview Meadows, there's a lot of folks in their backyard, you know, leaving it more or less unmaintained and just mowing as on an as needed basis. So um, the thought there was, you know, increase, decrease the backyard, keep the lot width the same, so that way we keep all the same foreplant, same front home elevations, all the things that we've already agreed to in the fair development.
And all the lots that touched by there will still remain, a little acre?
Yes, yeah, that part of the agreement um hasn't changed.
So looking at it from the health side.
So yeah, when you drive by, just, yeah, we'll keep, that's been the deal.
It will still look, kind of, as I say, formal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anyone's dying for this lot, but I actually like, and this is my thing, I like the layout of this the design better than the old one. Yeah. I mean, I don't think anyone's dying for some of that, but I actually like, and this is my thing, I like the layout of this design better than the old one. And I think, you know, given all the topics and the style, just to me, it makes sense for us to move forward. So, I mean, I know we've been discussing, are you getting involved in presentation?
No, I mean, this is it. If you, I can sit down, you all seen all the home photos. I'm happy to read them. Or if you guys really be liking girls, so you're back. Why I was watching you speak up. Okay. If you've seen them, then I won't make everybody look at them a third time. But, um, if you don't have any questions, I'm happy to sit down and talk. If you'd like to ask the questions, I'm also happy to hear and continue to answer.
No answer. Well, I was, I mean, I was just trying to look out for those who are already there and had those concerns. But if this new section is not, um, able to affect them, you know.
Yeah. No, I, and, and we're, we'll begin as a long history there for water. Thank you all for covering me for going through it as I stumbled through chemistry and water and stuff that, um, I've learned a lot about in the last two years. Um, but you know, we are still very committed. So if you ever have questions about quality or anything, please reach out. Go on the P O A website. Infra mark's numbers on every water bill and plastered everywhere, Caldwell and Callus.
I'm not leaving in Perryville. I'm Kim. I also have to get a, a, a pressure system.
I'll, I'll challenge you to do this. I think Austin Texas is the water provider.
One.
One of the water providers.
That's all.
Okay.
Man, unfortunately with the well water, I think everyone that lives here has to have some type of filtration system. I don't think there's anybody around.
He is.
Yeah. And I believe all those are well water from their system. I encourage you to call them and ask them for their water quality results.
That's why when you pulled up that website, I was like, do I have a website? I think that.
I would just, in the interest of, I'd just, you know, that you're not seeing that.
Like I can tell you, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
I didn't know. We talked about, uh, if, if y'all don't find there, you can't pull through anything and say you want a north.
Yeah. I mean, part of the, you know, the, the negotiation of course is by allowing some more density that'll give us, um, the ability to contribute more to fire here than for other larger part two. And we want to see the project kind of fruition. Obviously it's, um, informed us with the next phases. We're gonna have an entrance off of it. It would be less than ideal to have it concrete or excuse me, asphalt, gravel.
It'll be easier.
It'll be, it'll be better on the rest. I will, I will deny that of course, but I think it's probably mentioned, it's something that we've kicked around for a good long time. This agreement would put it finalized in very clear English and we can all kind of move on because it's been a lot of my predecessor, staff predecessors, you know, back and forth, who's going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for that? You know, it's like the, this kind of unique situation with city like. City like.
And I know you mentioned there's only eight homes in there now, but I don't think you want to waste those three hundred.
Well, maybe, because I said, there's only eight in the city limits. I'm not eight dollars off by there, but there's only eight.
Right. What I'm saying is we don't want to waste those three hundred and start a deal with this. So I think.
I, I agree. I just don't think it was right for me to sit here as the mayor that actually lives on the road to expect the taxpayer to spend three million dollars to pay the road for eight people.
Right.
That's, that was what I was, I don't mind him paying for it. But I think, I think the, uh, previous council will, three or four years ago, they took rather vast one companies that we don't have anymore. Like, in my opinion, should pay for all of them. That's just my opinion. Well.
Just out here now.
Yeah.
Get paid for.
All thing I'd like to ask, maybe in discuss, I'd like to discuss the agreements that's in place by and the amenities that was promised. I think those have got to be done before. Anyhow, any, any, any houses, any thought about being built in more.
Happy to commit to that.
Cause I, I don't want to build a house in phase, in phase one, and we still have a parking space too. That's not, no, I mean.
More than happy to commit to that. That's something council would like to see in this.
Yeah.
For, before we do phase one of north, but that's all we, we were, you know, it's in the works.
They'll give you the money to do it.
Cause that.
Give you the authorization to get the money to do it.
Yeah, no, we'll, we will be happy to commit to that.
And I do like the idea of having a mud meeting here. That's why Perry Meadows, people can easily come and speak to them about their issues.
Yeah. And once again, I, I can't speak on the app.
Is there anything apart? We can reach out to the board and have some type of, government tend to be going to try and talk to them about some of that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any, any other questions? Amendments.
Well, so I am going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the third amendments, the development agreement for Perry Meadows in the final form as approved by the city attorney. As well as a motion to approve the agreement for the construction funding and escrow of funds for Pioneer Road in the final form as approved by the city.
Seven. To both.
We're going on both of them together.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both.
Aye.
Who was the second?
Who was the second?
Oh, thank you.
Back this forward. Well, thank you. So an incentive will need to receive an incentive act on a appointing a naming review committee to review a naming application that has been submitted to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one. Uh, council, if you recall in Igwell, you ended up adopting a naming policy for city buildings, facilities, land, or any portion thereof. The policy contains a procedure to follow when a city receives a naming application for the naming of a city building, facilities, land, or any portion thereof. The procedures are listed down there. Basically, when we get an application, I come to the council and ask that you appoint a naming review committee that shall consist of the mayor, a council member, two city staff members. And if it's has to do with a park, we appoint it two park board members. If not, you can appoint two, uh, appointed officials from either P and Z or the parks board. Uh, wanting to know that the city did in fact receive a naming application from Mr. Hyman T. Chaco. He's the business owner of Top Flight, Top Flight Steel located at one oh one County Road forty-seven seventeen. He's interested in naming the new city park. So staff is requesting the city council to appoint a naming review committee to review the application and then make recommendations to the city council based on the application. The, the parks board meeting that we just had last week, there were, uh, two park board members, Deborah Green and Christine Walde that have volunteered to be on the naming review committee to represent the parks and recreation board if the council so desires. I stand for any questions.
We have a volunteer on this matter. It's been a very, city council.
So what, uh, is this a, an ongoing meeting thing or how, how often they meet for this?
No, I, I can see that if it be wanted done, I guess it depends on, um, how much, uh, information you're wanting from the applicant or anything you want to initiate with the applicant to point them out in the county.
Good. I, I don't find nobody else wants to do it.
If, if I was laying next to the applicant, I'd be coming with three or four.
I mean, if you're not supposed to do it, I'm not dying to, so I'm not trying to take it late somewhere else over there.
Well, it'd be good.
Um, staff to staff members. You need to, you need to appoint two staff members.
I'll say John Paulson.
Okay. And then, uh, you need two park board members. So and the two that don't. So the Deborah Green and, and, um, Christine Walde. Okay. So I just need a, a motion for someone to appoint these names to the application. The naming review committee and I'll get with them and they'll start ordering us on meeting with the applicant. So you have a motion.
I'm in personal. I moved to appoint a naming review committee to review the naming application submitted by Hyman Chaco that consists of the following individuals. Um, John Taylor, Deborah Green, Chris Waldo, uh, Pete, I've done it. You all say okay. Something else? Oh, John Paulson. Consider that two to three. Do we have a second?
Oh, I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both. Presenting your own.
I forgot. I'm sorry. I was reading. I was reading what coming up next. I will not.
Receive and send an act on the resolution updating the personnel policy and procedure manual.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one as well. So council, uh, back in June of twenty twenty, the city council adopted the current personnel policy procedure manual. There have been many changes in state and federal law that have occurred since this policy was adopted. Uh, a personnel policy procedure manual provides managers, supervisors, and employees with a great source of information about the policies, procedures, and administrative directives of the city. The manual also allows for good and uniform practices and administration in the management of city employees. And is also a good tool to help for promote recruitment of employees and retention of other employees. Uh, there were several one session discussions between staff and the council. Uh, the first one was March the eighteenth, the other one was April first, and the last one was on, on April the fifteenth. Based on the input and the consensus of the city council at those workshop discussions, uh, the proposed revision before you to the personnel policy, uh, is what staff had just amended. And, uh, we did involve our city attorney in quite a bit of the rewrite and she actually brought quite a few laws to our attention that we were not aware of. Um, and she is online and we have questions for her as well. But with that, I stand for any question.
Any question? I was looking at the certification and this had down differently than I thought we had to discuss. Cause this is laying out which licenses will be getting certifications.
That's correct.
Cause before I was under the impression that there was no limits and there were not, like, we didn't.
No.
But originally they could get a certification in underwater basket.
Right. Yeah. I think when we had a conversation, there were limits on things. They had to be approved by, um, they had to be approved by the city. They had to be meaningful to their jobs. They couldn't get a a scuba diving certification if they had to be somebody that applied to their job. So even if somebody like the secretary got a code violation certification, that wouldn't apply to every just a second job. So that would be.
That makes, that makes more sense. That's what I thought.
All pages, all pages. Get, get into the table there. You see that you only paid for one of those. So that came with it. We don't add up. You only get paid at the highest.
Okay. High certification. So if they got five, they're only going to get paid for the highest or not.
Of the same, so if it's like court clerk, if you have one, two, and three, you're only going to get paid for three. You're not going to get paid for two. But if they had somebody else, so court clerk and city secretary, that's a certification, then you get an increase for both of those. So those accumulate, but not higher than this.
Right. So these, these type of certification pays are, are tools that cities use to incentivize employees to go and get the proper training and licensing that's needed to benefit the organization from that additional knowledge, skills, and abilities they require for their work. So it's got to be, as, as Pete mentioned, it's got to be pertinent to their job. So if you're a city secretary, you can go out and you get your federal enforcement officer's license, but that's not the role you've been hired to do. So you're not going to be getting that certificate. However, if you are a, um, public works employee and you have an empty class, few yard risk license that C D L that we need for some equipment, then that's pertinent for your job stress. So you'll get that, uh, certificate.
Well, I have someone with a master's degree in several certifications. I am all for education as long as it's pertinent.
If you look at all these, at waterworks, waste water, this and forth, they're all at different levels. But they only get paid one at the highest level of that in that lot. But what Pete's talking about, if you look at other down the bottom, and then it continues on, both are additional, um, skills or training certifications that you could long as they're approved by the city administrator as being pertinent relative to your job, you could get that in addition to the other certification.
Like, like you were saying, it would not impertinent for Susan or somebody to get the COVID vaccine because they're not out.
But not being violating.
I mean, you can if you want to. That could be your part time.
Or violating will pay it. Uh, we're not, is there not a sign language?
Well, we ain't, we ain't.
Sign language is considered being.
Sign language, it's not a sign language. I guess it is.
Violent.
Yeah. And then my husband would never, would add one more parents for that.
Yeah. So as an example, Susan should be level three municipal court. And then she, this, this approved by the city administrators, viable players as well.
I would agree sign language is, cause my cousin was deaf when I grew up doing sign language. Of course I lost it. It's a perishable skill. But I would, and I teach deaf and hard with hearing and it's clearly stated that it is a language all to itself. It has no, it has no binding to English or any other language. So it is a language to itself. So I would agree to that.
I guess my concern would be the whole gun policy. How, I mean, we can't just say you can have it up, but you can't. How are we going to determine this?
So if you recall, and I don't remember if you were in council at the time or not, when I, when early I was early here in the early. There was a lot of discussion about trying to make the buildings here safer for our employees as well as for our, our meetings. Uh, and one of the ideas was find a way so that employees are able to, those are their license, able to carry if they so desire in the building. So that is the premise of where all of this started. And the intent is for employees that are here on the premises. The intent is not for an employee to have it in their pickup truck when they're out there driving around away from the complex. It's for when you're in this building to ensure if it's needed, you are able to, uh, defend yourself. If you're in a, a licensed carrier, um, or, or, or in, in the state of Texas. That's it.
So no one's going to be carrying it on where they.
Not in my loss. One man. Again, it's just going to be for here in this complex and that's it.
No, it's the, I don't remember. It's a, it's a requirement to carry. You have to keep it concealed. So you're not going to be able to like wear a holster and walk around.
Well, you, you, instead of Texas, you don't have to conceal it anymore. But what I will do is obviously you're going to want to make it concealed here because the last thing we want is to have any of our customers come to our window and feel intimidated because we have an employee talking to them. They've got a big gun strapped to their.
Right. That was my point. Like, I know the state of Texas does require it.
Right. But for us, yeah. Hard to be again, it's just, it's just in case you need to defend yourself, but does not necessarily mean that we want to exhibit out there that you've got an employee that's got a weapon on the person. Right? Because I think that the intimidation factor can be too much.
I think when it, when it was for the breath, we were thinking that COVID fortunately was wanting to wear it. And that would be an intimidation.
Right. No, that, yeah. And you're right. That would be an intimidation. Well, one intimidation factor. Two, there are tons of liability issues now getting into. So that is, yeah, but that's why there will not be allowed, employees not be allowed to take their weapons off of premises here. It's just for security.
You don't really like in your.
Right. Now, understand, this actually goes against my training and, and my, what I've been ingrained in my past experience of cities where cities make it very clear, absolutely not employees are you going to be allowed to have, and not even in your car, are you allowed to have it out in the parking? They just, uh, employees are typically not allowed to have weapons on city property, period, end of sentence. But a lot of the way things have changed over the years with mass shootings. And then again, going back to the discussion I had with the council and mentioning on looking at ways for us to protect ourselves. That's why we drafted this letter. If the council doesn't feel comfortable allowing employees to have weapons, we can easily rewrite this and say typically like what I'm seeing is city employees are not allowed to have any weapons on their property, uh, on city property, period, end of sentence.
John?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
One small correction. The city, um, is required to allow them in the vehicles so long as they're secured. Which means they have to be locked up. The vehicles have to be locked up. Um, so that, that is, that's. That's the only exception, but most, most cities, many cities. that's the only exception, but most, most cities, many cities, um, not most cities, I won't say most cities, many cities do prohibit them altogether. Some cities do allow them, the restrictions that were built in after discussion with John was that the city administrator who has access to the personnel files would, uh, determine, um, of course, he's got a law enforcement background, uh, would determine who was a good candidate and who wasn't. They have to have proof that they do in fact have a, a license to carry, even though that's not required by state law. It would be required by the city, uh, if it's not on their person, it has to be secured in their vehicle. Can't stick it in their desk drawer or whatever for somebody else to have access to, and um, the other provision that John mentioned is that they would not, it would not be open carry. I believe that's in there as well. It's been a few weeks.
So did I understand, and then you would be able to control who is able to have one and who's not?
Yes, ma'am, because again, I need to make sure that you've got your license.
Sure.
I have to make sure that, uh, you understand where you are and allowed, allowed to have it, i.e. here, not out there. Two, that, uh, uh, it's, you understand that it's going to be concealed carry, not open carry, right? And then, uh, there's a requirement here where every year you have to come and update and show me that your license has not expired. Um, I believe the thirty first of every, January thirty first of every year. So yes, it's going to be at the city administrator's discretion, because again, the whole point, concept is based on the discussion I had with the council is, they want to make sure that we are safe here without necessarily having them out there with a weapon. And certainly the last thing we want is to be intimidating any of our visitors or customers, right? That's why it's kind of narrowly spelled.
Right.
I'm a big proponent for guns and, and, um.
Well, they can say, at your discretion, so you're going to evaluate everything about this employee, there's a need, as well as their mindset, they have a tendency to get angry at times, you, they call, you're not going to be the type of mindset I want you to govern, right?
Correct, the other thing too is, you know, if this person ends up having some sort of substance abuse problem, right, that will be identified, well, that, that means that purpose is going to be automatically revoked, because the last thing you want is an employee who has not been identified as having a substance abuse, whether the offense is not, you know, regardless of the severity of the offense, there's a lot of times where you have some sort of recourse, training, uh, you know, uh, you're, you're written up, you get some sort of disciplinary action, you're not terminated as an employer, but you're on some sort of pit performance improvement plan. But again, the last thing I think you're going to want is to have an employee that has already been identified with that kind of issue to also be a person who's allowed to have a weapon, uh, in their office, right? Same thing with, uh, concerns that employees raise sometimes, you know, sometimes people go through depression, right? They, they start to talk about having suicidal thoughts, things like, so you have to have that flexibility with somebody's monitoring saying, timeout, we know you have the ability before, but we don't think it's a good idea right now.
How, how are you going to get, I'm sorry, how are you going to do that without making them feel discriminated against or?
That's a good question, I don't know, I mean, that's a conversation that I'll need to probably first have.
I understand the term drop, because I know there's certain people everywhere, they don't need to be carrying a gun, even though they have the ability to do so, but how, how do we get through saying, okay, uh, Susan can have her gun, but then somebody else can, you know?
Well, I think it's just, you know, you have an explanation, this is why I don't think it's, you know, appropriate at this time.
You just have to have that hard.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's unfortunate, sometimes you have to have it, you know?
Should the mayor be a part of that decision process?
It's up to you all, if you guys want to involve the mayor in that discussion.
I don't think it'd be that, uh, this is not going to be something that you're going to do with, uh, all the time, I think it'd be few people that would be requesting this or needing this, or, uh, I just.
Well, I mean, I don't think necessarily the initial decision, but maybe if they challenged it to, you know.
There should be a seal process.
Right, so maybe if there's a challenge to the, if you decide not to allow.
Oh, so somebody's challenging my decision that, yes, probably should not be here more.
I think you should, if you say no, it's no, I think if, if you know someone is carrying, you give them permission, I'll slide the mayor to the work, that who actually got it. I think that's not for that, I don't want to take away from your power.
No, I understand that, but I mean, just have a conversation about why you feel and see if, if they agree, kind of where they're, just so there's some type of appeal process if they they don't agree, which I don't anticipate happening, but, I mean, and I'm not trying to, you know, say that's not, this is what you need to make, it's just so they feel like, you know, there is some type of you know.
In case they think you're discriminating against them, because maybe you don't like them or whatever, then they could say, well, I'd like to have a conversation with the mayor or council or whatever they.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I'm okay with that, we can go ahead and set up so that the employee and I have a conversation with the mayor and then.
Well, I don't think I ever taste, I think only if they're appealing or trying to.
Yes, sure.
Not every.
I don't like their feeling, but I don't like they deserve to have a gun.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I do know for most things such as that there is an appeal process of some sort, so.
Well, and I, I'm going to bet in and say I don't recommend an appeal process, and here's why. I, I, I don't like involving the elected officials in appeal processes because it brings in to play a lot of other things, so if somebody feels that they were discriminated against, um, you know, feelings aren't facts, don't have a problem with maybe a second opinion, maybe from the mayor, um, since you're a general law city and, and he's sort of the CEO, if you will, but I I would kind of avoid vesting this with a lot of due process rights that are not, they're not entitled to under general law.
Well, I, I don't think an appeal process formally is what I meant, just, you know, to give the opinion of the mayor in that aspect.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good, that's, that's so that formal appeals.
Right, and I also had, uh, with the other restriction after conferring with some of the attorneys in our office, or the employment law partner in our office was to restrict it to full-time employees as, as opposed to part-time employees.
I agree with that.
Okay.
We done?
Well, those, those were the only two things I wanted to fair speech, you know?
I move to approve a resolution updating the personnel policy and procedure manual.
Well, I'm going to stop the topic.
Oh, so fair speech, hi?
Hi.
Those opposed?
Hi.
So now we will be back to the, oh, the law session for. Do you need a body break or?
I do.
Okay, you want to take a ten minute break?
Yeah, we have a ten minute break, a eight, five minute break, five minute break.
Eight, nine, ten, eight fifty.
I'd like to see you in the body working, I want to have an extra five minutes.
Hey, stand up a minute.
You want the concert, say fifty-three.
Yeah.
Also one of the big questions, two people asked, director Gafford, Oyswell, and Mike into that, and Torrey Riley, and we're working with the community at all. So they also agreed, yeah, and that's the sound of this whole theater, and that's there's some proposal, we should go to the job. We are getting well on, but it was ultimately going to get a solid.
There are a lot, but I like my first seven.
Talk someone else.
You want to?
No, no, sorry, they're not, no.
Well, yes, the recess.
No, that's her emergency, that's her emergency.
Well, I heard that was a little stressed.
Yeah, I have great confidence, sometimes, you know, stop that.
That would be why my fix is not working out every now and then, because it's kind of a head problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually, there's a problem with it.
Oh, I'm happy that I don't have to do that because I, I pay, so my days are bad, I can pay it at home.
It sounds like a grudge.
I know. When I remind you on the house.
Is that all?
My mom's helping me.
Well, John, you speak, you know, yes.
Yeah.
I have a lot.
John, I need to pee.
We're going back.
Look at.
What do you think?
It's nuts.
I'm trying to show, tell them, thank you.
All right, so we're back in session at nine oh two, John went over his five minutes. So we are. We see very important help discussion regarding an update to the city's strategic plan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I've got a presentation here. I've also printed it out so you have in front of you in case you want to write any notes. Um, as you know, in December of twenty twenty-two, the city launched a city satisfaction survey to collect input from residents on various city-related topics. In February of twenty-three, the council then held a strategic planning retreat to review the results of that, says in survey, and draft a strategic plan, which contains six strategic goals, including protect the public, invest in infrastructure, manage growth, exercise fiscal responsibility, parks beautification, and advance our interest. In March of twenty-three, the council adopted the city's first ever strategic plan. It also includes a vision statement, mission statement, four values. The strategic plan was used in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget discussion, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget discussions, which is the current budget that we're in now, with the city council, and staff uses it when we're making operational decisions. Let's, I want to go through the goal and give you an update as to what we have been able to accomplish or not accomplish for the various goals and objectives. So for goal one, protect the public, objective one point one, improve animal control services. The city has currently an air local agreement with Wise County for animal control services. The agreement, uh, the county agrees to provide animal control services for city-reported animal calls. That means that the call must be made from the city before the, uh, the county will dispatch someone out here. It can't be made from a resident. Uh, residents have complained to us that they have not been successful in getting some of their stray animals collected from time to time. Uh, staff has had discussions with area cities about the possibility of starting up an animal control service at one of these cities and then entering interlocal agreements for those services amongst the other cities, but I don't have anything to report to you there.
Not during the official debate?
Sarah, no, are they? Okay.
They're outside at the moment.
I'm shocked. They took in a cat, um, last month, and that is never.
Hmm, it's totally dark, but they don't give a.
Yeah, they took me too.
So continuing on under goal one, objective goal point two is to improve code enforcement. Uh, we do have a licensed code enforcement officer that staffed against code violations. At the end of the twenty twenty-three year, we purchased that funded code enforcement module I discussed with you earlier, so we were able to start keeping track of code enforcement cases. Uh, fortunately, we only have one officer right now. We have not pulled the other FTE that's supposed to help out at this time. Um, so to date, there's only been eleven code violation cases that have been put into the system. Some of those have been voluntarily evaded, some of them have actually gone to, uh, citation mode, and there were five citations thus far that have been submitted to municipal court for code violations. Uh, protect the public, objective one point three, grow public safety services. In September of twenty-three, the city entered into a new fair, an agreement with New Fairview Fire Rescue and increased their annual amount from twenty-six thousand four hundred to fifty-two thousand eight hundred for fire protection services. The city also contributed seven thousand dollars for six new bunker gear lockers that they have located here in our municipal, uh, uh, complex, at the multipurpose building. The city also, in September twenty-three, entered into a new agreement with Justin Community Volunteer Fire Department and increased their annual amount from twelve thousand to twenty-one thousand for fire protection and for EMS services for the Dent County side of our city. In twenty twenty-three of September, the city also entered into a near local agreement with the city of Boyd for limited law enforcement services. Boyd PD provides approximately fifteen hours to enforce city ordinances and to enforce our traffic laws. The estimated cost for this is about a hundred and six thousand dollars for the year. To date, the city has paid forty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty, seventy-six dollars for two quarters or half a year of that service. In July twenty twenty-three, the city entered into an ILA with Boyd for municipal court services. We agreed to operate their municipal court, and they pay New Fairview thirty-three and a third of the court revenue that they generate. As of the end of April twenty twenty-four, we have received forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars for this agreement performed. Uh, goal two, invest in infrastructure. Objective two point one, better roads and drainage. In March of twenty twenty-three, the council awarded a drainage improvement contract for Stewart Street and the city park located at one fifty Stewart Street for twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety, and this project was already completed, uh, April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, in March of twenty twenty-three, the city council entered into a local agreement with Wise County to reconstruct Wilson Fort and Presser Lane. This, if you recall, this was part of the community development block grant that was awarded to the city, but we had run out of money in doing the drainage, so the council went ahead and approved two hundred and five hundred dollars for this project, and we used the SSLR.
The cabs.
The, yeah, the COVID money for this. Uh, in April of twenty twenty-three, their construction was completed by the company that was doing the drainage improvements for Wilson and Presser, and this work was part of that Texas Community Development Block Grant that was awarded to us. Uh, in March of twenty twenty-three, the city council had a work session to discuss options for funding the need of reconstruction and drainage improvements of several city roads, and in August of twenty twenty-three, the council issued three point five million dollars in certificates of obligation for the reconstructions of various roads. In December of twenty twenty-three, the city awarded a drainage improvement contract for installation of drainage pulvers and head walls along Langue Way, Hilltop Trail, uh, in, in Lot Court, and Chisum Hills Drive for approximately three hundred and forty-three thousand and change. This, this project was just recently completed. Uh, in February twenty twenty-four, the city council awarded a roadway construction, reconstruction project for Langue Way, Hilltop Trail, Ailah Court, Chisum Hills Drive, and Chisum Hills Court, uh, for approximately one point four five million dollars. This project is still ongoing. In April of twenty twenty-four, there was a two hundred and twenty-five foot section of Dove Hollow that was reconstructed, that included milling, compaction, tack oil application, and paving. This project has been completed. The public works department is engaged in frequent repairs in all, in all sections of the city, filling potholes, crack ceiling, uh, cleaning and repairing drainage ways, and installing traffic signs. Under objective two point two, convert the multipurpose building to a public safety installation. The multipurpose building continues to house the New Fairview Fire Rescue, Wise County EMS, and the county public works department. Improvements continue to be made to the building, uh, which, for example, in that picture, you'll see that the extractor machine and the dryer are now operational, as well as in the upper right-hand corner of that picture, you see the red, the new red, um, um, garage door, uh, openers that we are replacing the older outdated ones with these. Uh, we've got, we replaced three last year. We've got three we're replacing this year, and three we'll replace next year. Um, until a new building is constructed for the public works department to use, the multipurpose building will need to continue to be shared with public safety. Objective two point three, build a public works building. So there currently are no plans to build a new public works building, however, based on the discussions that I've had with you guys regarding the opportunity of regional water district and our city, and city of Justin regarding us being able to connect to them, to be able to get water and wastewater services. At some point, there's going to be a need for us to start up a public utilities department, and it would make sense to have a public utilities slash public works building sometime in the future. So at some point, sometime in the future, staff will be having a work session discussing with the council to determine what direction you're going to want to take. Under goal three, manage our growth. Uh, objective three point one, respect our rural heritage. In February twenty twenty-three, the council created a Keaton Fairview Beautiful Committee with duties related to the community appearance, beautification, the environment, and interests into our community. Uh, Keaton Fairview Beautiful organized a cleanup event and worked with staff to successfully land a Green River Program Red from TexDOT that we're looking at doing at, uh, Frontage Road, US two eighty-seven at F M four oh seven. Objective three point two, keep existing new residential minimum to one acre lots. Staff has been working still with U N P consultants on the comprehensive plan that will identify areas of cities for one acre minimum lots will be located, uh, meaning it's scheduled soon to seek input from residents on the growth scenarios that they have come up with before presenting this to the planning zoning commission and ultimately the city council to adopt the comprehensive plan. Staff is also, uh, waiting. We reached out again to D C Q to hear back about the proposed ordinance that they need to approve before we can come back and have a discussion with you regarding a one acre minimum for lots served by public water supply systems. Currently, half acre minimum is for anyone attached to a public water supply system. Objective three point three, update the zoning map. We cannot update the zoning map until we have our comprehensive plan that's been adopted. Goal four, exercise fiscal responsibility. Objective four point one, sustain a low property tax rate. So the current fiscal year, twenty three point four budget, the city council approved a tax rate of point two five eight for a hundred dollar valuation, which is actually lower than the point two six one from the previous year. If you'll notice, if you recall, the city also received from Standard and Forest Global the, to being removed from the credit watch list that we were on, and we were able to retain our credit rating of A plus stable, which helps us whenever we go to, uh, issue bond or incur any kind of debt. That is what the financial institutions look at as what is your, uh, S and P rating over the city. Uh, under objective four point two, seek grant, seek grant opportunities. February twenty twenty-three, the council authorized a submission of a Texas C P G application for five hundred thousand dollar grant for a section of Latham Lane, Chisum Hills subdivision, and the city was awarded this grant. We're just waiting on permission now from the state to allow us to let that project, and we're being told it may have to be in the summer or early fall before they get us that permission. We're going to environmental clearance for them. In April of twenty twenty-four, the city received the, a rainwater harvest grant from Opportunity Groundwater Conservation District. Uh, in May of twenty twenty-four, the city received notice from TexDOT that our application was approved for the proposed project I mentioned earlier on US twenty-seven at four oh seven. This is a total award of a three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of TexDOT's money, uh, but this is going to be a lengthy process that we're going to have to go through, and we'll actually have to contract to engineer and design those because TexDOT still wants that to review. Staff is also working with the Parks and Recreation Board currently on what to include in a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, matching, so that means three hundred thousand total, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, uh, which will be bringing to council, uh, before we submit the application, and that deadline is August for this year. Uh, objective four point three, sync, seek interlocal opportunities. So in July twenty twenty-three, the city entered into a joint resolution with Rome and Justin to regard preferred routes that we wanted from the proposed Grand Horn Hill, Durham, uh, on core transmission lines. So we actually worked with two other cities to ensure that what makes sense for them and makes sense for us is what we will submit in, uh, to, uh, the state. Uh, we also, as I mentioned earlier, entered into an ILA for municipal services with Boyd and an ILA for lawn postal services. So just a quick chart here, as of this fiscal year, we have received four hundred and nineteen citations, uh, of those citations, two hundred and seventy-six has been disposed of in some form or fashion, which is equivalent to eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars in fines. Um, we've also are at partying with the Royal Boyd, Rome Paradise, and Wise County on a joint resolution for looking for regional water and wastewater solutions, and in fact, at some point, uh, here, probably the next meeting, I'll be bringing a contract for the city to consider with Lloyd Gosling, that's a law firm that's been selected by the Wise County Mayor's Coalition Steering Committee to contract with them to help draft the language that's needed, that we will need to create a bill, hopefully create a regional water district for Wise County. Uh, the council also recently approved a joint resolution with the city of Justin on water and wastewater solutions. That's again part of the effort that former board of Justin and a contributor regional artists are to be able to provide water to the Dent County side of Old City. Uh, and in March twenty twenty-four, the council entered into funding agreements with the two main developers, Shoe Branch, which I think they're being called all approved now, and Constellation Lake developers, to help fund the water line survey as well as the water modeling study that the city of Justin has asked us for, as we're looking at trying to connect to their infrastructure on the west side of their town. Goal five, parks and beautification. So objective five point one, develop and enhance community events. The city has held a semi-succumbent celebration in May twenty twenty-three to celebrate our fifty years of existence as an incorporated city. We also built our first city park and held a grand opening in October of twenty twenty-three and included the Trump Retreat event, and we've held two of these three, uh, egg hunts since we adopted the strategic plan, and the twenty twenty-four event that was held at the city park was actually much bigger than the twenty twenty-three event that we had here at City Hall. Objective five point two, enhance the beautification of the community. The city council created a Parks and Recreation Board in twenty twenty-three, and the park board has been working with staff to draft a twenty, oh, we drafted a twenty twenty-four park survey to gather input that we needed, and now we're working on the creation of a Parks and Wolf and Space Master Plan, which will be brought to the council whenever the park board is completed. They're working on that. Enhancing the communication of the communities, objective five point two, the city continues to hold a free community cleanup events each quarter for both the item and, uh, debris removal. Um, it's gotten so popular that we have two now, right? Excreted, that we're paying for. We're now paying for two additional on top of the full three ones we get. There's been discussion that some folks in Fairview Meadows are interested in coming to participate in this, but again, this is only for residents, so, um, I reached out to the HOA to the developer to see if they're willing to contribute monetarily, and then if they are, what that's going to look like, and then I can bring that back to council and reach out to frontier ways to see if they're willing to, uh, bring out even more doctors. So there's possibly we may be able to help out Fairview Meadows if that's the direction the city council could want to take, but we're not ready to have that discussion yet. Uh, Keaton Fairview Beautiful Committee also organized a one cleanup event thus far, but they are in the process of starting to organize quarterly cleanup events throughout our city. Uh, goal six is to advance our interest. Uh, one, six point one is improve communications. So the, we, city officials did participate, uh, in the Wise County legislative days and did go down to Austin to communicate with state elected officials and staff what our legislative priorities and concerns were. We also continue to utilize our website and our one social media platform, which is Facebook, to communicate city information to the public on, as well as the email system that we've got on our list. So you can register if you're a resident to get email updates anytime we post something new on our website, and our city secretary pushes that out when we post something new on our website. So it's another way that we communicate. Uh, six point two, protect our extraterritorial jurisdiction. There has not been any activity regarding our ETJ right now, so we taking no action on this objective. Objective six point three, development economic development plan. Uh, staff at the city council have not had a chance to sit down and discuss the development economic development plan. However, the city council has approved some economic development, including an S and P here recently for a recreational vehicle and bulk storage facility on Grand Row, as well as the rezoning of a planned development on Grand Row, which is remove the water tank business with a, uh, business out of Fort Ward that works with, or provides, uh, supplies to belt helicopter in, in the US military. As we continue to grow, as especially as we're getting, uh, some of our new developments over here on the Dent County side growing, and now Senator's plan, and, um, where hopefully we'll start to get folks coming from the Fairview Meadows north into our city up to at the four oh seven, we really need to start talking about some parcels of land that are located along four oh seven that we could easily turn into economic development opportunities. Uh, there's also a, a planned discussion that I think we need to have later this year regarding M V Ds and municipal development histories. I understand before I started here, the city made a run at it, and unfortunately, I think there was a lot of misinformation and not very good educational information as to what an M V D is and what it's not, and the pros and cons. Uh, Susan is working on researching on M V Ds, and so later this year, once she's done, we'll come have that discussion, but that's also an economic development tool that will be in your toolbox if it ends up being passed by the locals. So, uh, that is the, the update on our strategic plan. Again, it was adopted in March twenty twenty-three. This is a very important document because this is the way that the council communicates, not just to staff, but to the residents and to the general public as to what your priorities are, and we, this time of year, definitely need this because we want to make sure in our budget discussions, we are coming prepared to address any of the goals or objectives. So what I need to know is, is the council wanting to make any changes and revisions to our strategic plan so that I can start to prepare that for your adopting whatever revisions have been made, but in the meantime, I now have that information as I'm having discussions with staff at department heads on our proposed budget that I'm going to start talking to you all in June about, uh, when we start airing our budget workshops for next week.
I have a question. Wait, uh, so last year, before we did the strategic plan, uh, we had a survey set. Would it make sense to put on another survey to see if there's any significant changes on some of the, um, some of the things that people want to see us doing differently in the city before we decide if we're going to do this? Uh, so, you know, if the survey comes back and there's similar things that they're submitting, you know, then maybe decide if we want to relax.
So, yeah, if you want to do that, you know, we can work on putting together another survey, putting it out, but understand that it's going to take a while. So you probably will not be ready to have a result of that until, say, July, and by then it's going to be too late really to try and amend it so that it's impacting the budget. Now, if you wanted to do the survey, my recommendation would be go ahead and do a survey again later this year, like maybe fall, early winter, and then you take the input for that like we did last time, and you have your retreat early next year, and then decide what changes you're going to make, but early enough that that way, when we start talking about the fiscal year for twenty-five, twenty-six, then you'll now have that updated, uh, information.
Yeah, yeah, so it really wouldn't make sense to do that.
Not, not now, but I think that it would make sense to get another updated input because things have changed since we did things, uh, we did the survey back in December, uh, twenty twenty-two, January twenty twenty-three. So it'd be nice also to determine have people, have people's attitudes changed about our roads and our drains, especially with the amount of, uh, improvements that have taken place since that first record was done years ago, and we hadn't done a lot of these projects.
How does our website hold up to other city websites?
Well, you've been researching that more than mine. Well, you've been researching that more than I have.
Honestly, our website is a lot better than a lot of the websites that I have looked at. Um, it is hard for me to find when we were looking for anything to do with budgets. It's hard to find, I don't have even looked at any budgets that are in our city, in Wise County. But they might be four or five pages long, and it's all like ours used to be when I first started. City Secretary, one large stuff, it doesn't break everything, it sounds like ours do. So we don't, it's hard to tell where the money's coming for other cities unless you work there, you know, I ask the right questions. Same with ordinances, uh, some minutes. Uh, I'm a little biased harsh because I've worked really hard on ours to get us to where we are. But compared to everybody else, I think ours is the most transparent, you can give to anything information you're being.
I, I am speaking with that statement.
Yeah.
If I can find it.
Yeah.
It's going through here and trying to find what I'm, what I'm looking for. Uh, it could, it could be pretty actual more user friendly.
I try to make it, I, I will be honest, when I go on my home line and look at our website, and then on our desktop, like on my computer, I try to make it where you can get to everything within three clicks from that homepage. Now, if it's something you have to go within a page, I try to highlight that in the alert bar. So elections, budgets, things that we're working on, like the strategic plan, we had another survey out. There wouldn't be a way that I could plug that in to get to three clicks on that homepage. So I've put that in the alert bar at the top, but I will do a better job of looking at every one.
Talking about budgets.
Yes.
And if that's something that we need, you know, money, I would like to see something similar for what John sends the council members on a Friday memo. Hey, this is what they're doing, and it, and it popped up.
I can add that under the news part of this, I've not been adding those, uh, but I can start adding those. It'll pop up under the news, and I would just put weekly update with the date, and it would pop up under the news every time I've updated, and it keeps the three most recent ones on that one.
Yeah, under, you know, news, we got environmental noted, pro, photo.
Yes.
Pro, project.
That's where that would pop. If I add in, I'm not putting, so if you like those, there, I mean, I think you can add those, I can start posting those, so.
And it has to need three or four minutes to find, you know, the, the bit that, hey, we got a town for tonight, you know, so. And it's, I'm not blaming nobody.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying if it can't be done, or if we need something to do that, that it, you know, pops up on Friday, agendas for here for Monday, or something that and I don't know how much, if you can track this and see how often people go to that, maybe they don't use it, I don't know, but.
For your, your job, right, when you're on mobile, it's a whole different format than it is when you're on, like, there's a ton.
Yeah, it is a lot easier to manage, we get through when you're on your phone, it's a lot.
So, so when you're on your mobile, everything, the whole screen, the different uh sections are all squeezed in and, and in line.
Yeah, I agree.
That's why it seems so spread out. I, I used to play the same thing until I saw the difference, oh, now I see why it's different on mobile.
There's, somebody keep sending me messages from the city email that, oh, your website, and I was on my computer going through all of this uh today, and, and it just I, I know there's websites that are easier, I don't know much they cost, well, if there's something on if it, if it's something we could add or anybody else even, you know, has anything to say about it. Citizens may be fine, but I don't know. And I'd like it to be more city involved with, you know, pictures like that, uh, stuff like that.
Yes.
I think we knew that with our current site, that they'd cost a lot of money to transfer over to something different. Uh, I, I wouldn't want any more money, and I look at a lot of the cities' websites that were on par than, you know, the guns above. But I do agree, I have the mobile friend, the mobile's not friendly, it's just, just not. I do agree with you having, like, a weekly update, information, I want, I think that would be great.
We can also change the pictures that rotate on the home screen, because when we first did it, we didn't really have any photos of anything going on in the city. Now we do, and we can have those rotate now and take off some of like the sunsets and some of a running field that was out there, it was just photos that were taken in our city, but we didn't have any events going on. So we can update that, and you can see more pictures of what's going on.
Oh, I think it's important to kind of keep everyone updated with the things that are going on. But I also don't want to get too focused on it, where people are spending too much of their day updating stuff because that just takes away from getting some of your job done. Like, I don't want to suspend forty percent of our day updating on what's going on because that's simply a waste to me, where things that need to get done, get done instead of saying, hey, look what I did. And I, I, it's gotta be balanced, like, I know it's important to kind of get it out there what's going on. But I think a lot of, you know, some of the stuff, especially, you know, the things that you do inside of the building here are a little bit critical for people to see outside. But for example, like Public Works, you know, people are seeing them out doing things in the road, putting signs up, and sometimes they're not always where the bigger population of people are. But I think that's more important to see some of the stuff getting done than to, than to spend a lot of time trying to update it.
And are, are we still on strategic plan or are we on website now?
Yeah, well, I think the website may be something that they want to change or include in a strategic plan revision. I'm sorry, are you saying?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just asking for purposes of maybe it can go on an agenda.
Oh, no, 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 I'm asking them for input on any changes to the strategic plan.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion to the website? Is it asked every election time, is there a link to the election places where we're supposed to vote? I mean, it constantly asks.
I, so I tag them because it didn't tell me changes and it's dependent, so I, I get to their homepage.
Okay.
And on ours, I just link it to theirs, but if we like, I mean, I can, yes, it's just more difficult because they have, it's such a misjudgment.
Yeah, it'll be less.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can also version, version out of the meeting as well. Yeah, everybody.
It's several for us and when we.
Yeah, and it changes every time.
But sadly, I have control.
Uh, right, yes.
Yeah, I mean, last county that has four licenses to put it that way.
Yes. I'm gonna have to call someone, like, can I go there? No, I'm sorry, they didn't use us.
Or the strategic plan on website, I wouldn't want to change it. I think the word, word is shaking, that's vital.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm on there all the time, some of these, they don't have an aggregate.
So any revisions to the strategic plan. If not, I will continue to use that as my marching order so that when we start having budget discussions, again, I'll come back and start talking to you guys now. I will continue to further trying to reach the objectives and goals if you get into us.
So I don't really think, I'm not, you know, I, I don't think, I see any changes at this point. I think, like you mentioned, you know, trying to get a survey out and maybe revisiting it again in the fall before the next project thing, or the spring or whatever the situation is.
Right, that, that would, that would make it about two years. So it sounds about right for putting out a survey and feel the temperature of residents to say, hey, it's been two years. What do you think now? And in this case, now we have things that we can ask and figure for, because now, for example, we have a city park. So you can add one or two questions on there about the park, but obviously you don't want to make it just focused on anything, right? So we've got more uh developments taking place. You'll have other things that you're able to ask, but you want to also continue to ask certain basic things, like how people feel about our roads, our drainage, and our signs and things of that nature in our events. Because you want to see, are you making any improvements forward or are you falling backwards? And this gives you that history over time, you can start to see how we're doing as an organization, and we meet their expectations or not, and if not, then we need to delve down further to figure out, okay, why not? And what's it gonna take to do that? So, no money at it, or just better communication, or rearranging, something, there's all kinds of things.
Yeah, I don't think I'd want a survey to go between here just we're, we're going here, but I don't, I don't want to go there, I don't like there, but they need a little slope there.
And to your point, Eric, again, this is why you have folks this document, because this is what keeps councils grounded. You know, you could have community, community council members come on board, and then all of a sudden, now they want to go this direction. Well, the council here should say, whoa, timeout, we have this plan, and here's what we've done to this plan. If we want to change it, and let's have a discussion, a public discussion about changing this plan and figure out what we're gonna take on, what we're gonna take off, and the impact it's gonna be. That's where a lot of times cities get in trouble with wasteful spending of taxpayers' money. It's you start to spend money on a project here, and then you need a new council member that comes in, a new council member to come in, and they say, no, we don't want to do that anymore, we want to do this. Well, then what has happened to all this money and effort that we spent trying to get this done? And now we come to a screeching hole, and now we gotta start over here, but we've kind of wasted all this money over here. So that's why you want to have something like a strategic plan, because that keeps you grounded as to what truly are your priorities. And again, the budget is one of your biggest documents, strategic plan is another big document for you, where you're letting the public know what your priorities are. And we need to make sure that the budget's aligned with what strategic plan. So that's why I'm having this discussion with you all online, I told you so I was gonna win it. So the new person came on board, but I wanted to make sure she had an opportunity to also turn in to see if we would make any changes. But I think we're, as you can see, we're accomplishing some things that you've given us to do. In certain areas, we're not so much, but we'll continue to work on trying to get those done, and others are more long-term. And we're not ready yet to have a discussion on a new public works bill.
Well, you know, I, I believe all of us were here, obviously, except you, so do you have any input on something that you think we're missing or something needs to be added?
Um, not at this time. I mean, I, I glanced over it and everything, because I've kind of been keeping track this whole time. Um, and it looks like it did, you know, last year.
Yeah, I mean.
And things are moving along, um, I will, at some point, want more clarification on all of the, uh, you know, the EMS and the, the public works buildings and all of that stuff. But right now, it looks like it's going in the right direction.
What do you think else? Thanks, all of you. Same with that, I can get a motion to close the work session.
I'm gonna come over and turn the works.
Okay.
All of the papers say a.
Aye.
Does both?
Somebody ever. Well, I'm always over there, they're not.
I might do that one time this.
Just to see what happens.
So with that, we're gonna move into the executive session. We're gonna be assessed the executive session, discuss matters pertaining to your property pursuant to five five one point oh seven two, Texas government code, integration of economic development negotiations pursuant to five five one point oh eight seven. Texas government code, discuss personal matter pursuant to five five one point oh seven four. Texas government code, discuss I D network or critical infrastructures security pursuant to five five one point oh eight nine. Texas government code, and to consult with the city attorney pursuant to five five one point oh seven one. Texas government code, the city, the council may go into closed session at any time when permitted by five five one, Texas government code, or chapter four one eight, Texas tax code. Before going closed session, a one of the council must be president. The meeting must be converted, convened as an open meeting pursuant to proper heldness. The presiding officer must announce that a closed session will be held and must identify the sections of five five one four four one eight, Texas government code, authorizing the closed session. We will be going to closed session for five five one point oh seven one. It's a consultation with attorney to seek the advice of the city attorney about pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offered or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government, governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas, clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding roles and responsibilities of city council members regarding complaints. Be five five one point oh seven one, consultation with the city attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act regarding employment agreement for John Paulson. See five five one point oh seven four, person to deliberate to appoint employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officers or employees employment agreement of John Paulson. At nine forty.
At nine forty-three, yes.
Oh, I'm looking for a clock, it's not forty-three. That was slow.
One moment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just kind of hit Robert, and I want to make sure we're in the right meeting before you start. Is she in? We're gonna be there now.
We have to know what they, yes. I almost had an opinion. My name, my call. Thank you. Make good decisions.
Where's the information? Is it online?
It is online. It's at our Facebook page and then everybody who's joining co-hosting with us, they're on there as well. We're gonna have hot dogs, chips, breakfast, side breakfast items.
I'm gonna take my blood in the 15.
Yeah, I suggested if I thought of donating the blood, I did not eat afterwards.
Yeah.
I needed that to hear us.
Yeah.
But I can answer from that. Yeah. Robbie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are back in the executive session at ten fifteen. So now, we'll return to all session discussing, taking appropriate action if any resulting from the discussions conducted in the executive session. Make a motion. Make a motion to extend the contract to City Administrator John Caparlos for a conditional year as finalized by the city attorney. Do you have a second?
A second.
All of us, a favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The passage of the national. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
So, mayor and council, member announcements. I had some. I was reminded of some, but that was four hours ago, so I don't remember when I was coming. Blood draw.
Yeah, the county has a whole bunch of people who are probably standing doing it.
Yes, but make sure you go online, schedule a time.
Yes.
We can call. I got yours.
We can call you because we can see the bad men and we can schedule a time.
But now the question could be, who are you going to credit your donation to?
You don't have to say.
No, you have to tell me. I'm just saying you're going to get bobby probably because we're going to have other public safety folks out here trying to get you to give them the credit so they win the award from the card of blood draw.
But if we didn't do the QR code, we registered on the back end.
So I didn't do the QR code. I just went on the, I have an account for bobby.
Okay.
So I, I just went in there and scheduled and was able to look up little drugs, type of things that are code.
Okay.
So.
I'd be a trigger if I did it for the fire or the EMTs.
No.
At the end of the day, it doesn't matter because Wise County EMS is going to be the benefactor.
And if anyone's listening, Wise, yeah, if you don't know, Wise EMS now carry blood products on their rescue truck. And they need donations for every unit of blood that they take. I believe they haven't had three donations made or been received back. So it's super important they do that and it benefits Wise County. I don't know if anyone was listening, but.
Yes, they are.
It is very, very important.
We have ninety-eight that we're trying to give. We have seven people scheduled.
We have work will be created.
Is it on?
Yes.
Where's the information? Is it online?
It is online. It's at this on our Facebook page and then everybody who's joining co-hosting with us, they're on there as well. We're gonna have hot dogs, chips, breakfast, side breakfast items.
I'm gonna take my blood in the 15.
Yeah, I suggested if I thought of donating the blood, I did not eat afterwards.
Yeah.
Oh. I might have to get double credits for plasma.
No, you don't.
It's all.
I did.
You did more jobs reds though.
I did double reds last time and they didn't do either.
Ah.
But I have to work this time, so I'm not going to be able to be here, but.
They won't, they won't let me building platelets or five and for some reason I had four.
You have to meet certain levels.
Like they test your blood. If you don't meet those levels, they don't.
I can donate blood all I want. It's just since I had four, they said because I had four chances, I can't donate.
Well, if you don't mind, please go to our Facebook page and push it out to your, they're really trying to get as many people as possible.
There were nine slots that we can have.
We need, there are ninety-eight spots, seven.
Ninety-eight slots we can actually potentially fill.
Yes, I pushed about the Justin page. And let anybody know if they don't want to, I know some people aren't tech savvy. They don't want to do the QR codes. Call us. I will take that phone home and schedule.
Yeah, I mean, we pushed about our neighborhood page.
Yeah.
So we're slowly getting the word out and I know that our public safety partners are putting it on their social media as well. So hopefully we'll have a very good turnout because again, at the end of the day, the winners are Wise County EMS and really the true winners are the residents of Wise County.
The men are getting out of the paper as well.
Yeah, I knew it. They're putting it out in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was the other one you asked me?
That's so much time.
That's, yeah, that's all I had. So, anybody else anything? Do you have a question to adjourn?
I'm making questions.
Do you have a second?
A second.
This was gonna be the time.
Because nothing but the Florida media would.
All right, council, thank you very much for your time. Sorry it was a long meeting.
Honestly, I thought it was gonna go longer.
And that's okay. How did everybody like the city box law?
I did.
I love it.
I think. I can't get here six every day.
Oh.
Good night everyone.